I hit my GPS, I thought it was at the port, but then he sent me this email, temporary place. And so when I hit GPS, it wanted to put me down towards the scope. And then when I clicked it again, it wanted me to go like Limerick. And I text him, I go, where the heck am I going? Where's the port? They go, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I click the address, it sends me to, um.
Yeah, she rang and said, oh, there's an address there.
When I click the address, it would send me, which sends me to, um. But here's the address I get right here. And then it sends me to Rose Lake, and that's where I wish to go. And that's not where it is, but that is the address. So it's really weird, and then again, and then it wanted me to go with Limerick. I think I clicked this way, and then it's somewhere else. But when I went to Google, and I just typed in Google, it sent it to me back to the port. And I thought it was a port, but he put in an email, this is the temporary location. So I thought maybe we were going somewhere else. That was something. About ten minutes later, I don't know.
That would be okay?
Absolutely.
You want to put one there by you? I don't know if it's on.
Yeah, nobody.
On the bottom, push it down.
Sorry.
There's one more of that.
I don't want to be heard, sorry. Lucky I got to where it's.
And he's got one more.
Oh.
There's one here. Yeah, one by Miguel. It should be good, and then I'll get one.
We do this stand. Pass Mike.
You want more, you want one of these?
Oh, wait, must be good. I'm just talking about.
You guys lost some karaoke tonight?
Yeah.
I'm trying, but I listen for this area.
All right. Good evening, welcome to today's session of June tenth. Donna, will you do your roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Flush.
Here.
Uh, councilmember Sterns is absent this evening. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman. Oh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Councilmember Sterns is on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. It's councilmember Sap who is not here this evening. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
All right. Tonight, city manager Mark Feigler had information for us on service levels.
Not just city manager, we've got the whole crew here for you tonight outside of the S and K. So this is a follow-up from our May fifth retreat when we went through that service level discussion. The intent here is to provide a little more information on the lowest priority selected by council for that exercise. So you can better understand financial impacts, community impacts, internal impacts, and what some of the options may be to be considered by council moving forward. So I obviously expect any decisions tonight, but it's more information for you to, you know, to develop some of these decision points. It is helpful to give as much feedback tonight so we can move forward and start, you know, formulating that budget and determining where we're going to go in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Because some of these may be phased as we go through some of the options here. You'll see some of the options that kind of phase some of the reductions. Service, put them to the expenditure, right? Some of them might just be full elimination services based on the council's input at the same time. I don't have a goal for you tonight necessarily, a dollar figure. We just kind of want to work through the, I don't know, I don't even remember how many it was, the highest, highest and lowest priorities, if you will. And so we'll just work down the list. I've got a hard copy in front of you, electronic copy on the screen. And we'll work it through, so it might jump around by department, if you will. So we'll start with community development and Jay talking about animal shelter services.
And do you mind if I just handle animal shelter and control or same type of things?
Sure.
Right, it's a part of it. They're very related, so. So yeah, this was the one that in the retreat had the highest or I guess reddest net score. And it's the animal shelter function. As you might remember, it came to community and economic development from the police department just a couple of years ago. What was being operated in the police department was a slightly different kind of paradigm in the COVID period. We operated under contract with a lot of other providers where we could just network out our dogs very quickly. A period between receiving, you can see that, you know, we pay them to their owners, they take our dog. So that's, that's how it's working. Well, in the post-COVID era, when people started having to do whatever kind of work, conditions change, so on. A lot of those partners that we had been able to source the dogs out to, we don't want to receive them. And so we started having to take on more and more formal duties at shelter. And so our budget went from, I think, eighty thousand dollars and two part-time individuals working. To now we have one full-time, three part-time, and you have a current salary of about ten dollars. Very day-to-day, it seems like you get two out and three in, and it's just kind of the world we're living in. The shelter, while it is a public service, people come to us to, you know, house surrenders or find their missing dogs or whatnot. So there's some level of public service, but more than anything, it's an internal service. It supports animal control functions, law enforcement functions, and law enforcement specifically by giving officers places to house and convince their animals without an animal shelter. Quite frankly, we're at pretty, like, we didn't have one at all. We're, we're pretty limited options by our law enforcement officers moving. If they encounter a dog and take, as soon as we're taking care of it, becoming an animal care control agency under Washington state law, you're obligated to hold it for seventy-two hours if it's complete stray, fourteen days, if you know the property of the dog. And so once you're all careful, how fast you care for it, it starts kind of a trickle-down. So the, the shelter, I tell people, it is, it is on or it is off. There's very little that we can do related to the level of service out there. Always take more money and more, but, but it's very hard to do less because we're making pretty minimum staffing. Be very aware of our costs trying to keep them up. But they are, you know, four times higher than where they were a couple of years ago when you were just networking out a much smaller population of dogs. And so again, the internal impact is really, in my opinion, most easily supported. Because if they're having to take the dogs somewhere, maybe be able to get them in a welfare in society. Might be able to find a place with one of the local providers or are taking them to, to, for instance, in Olympia, which is, you know, kind of akin to our officers driving a prisoner into a swell or something. Takes a lot of time on the books for them to get somebody to help her. So I would say that animal control, which is, which is a part of this, we have our position that's currently in the budget as our animal control officer right now is being filled by, I guess he didn't have anybody. Who are certification to meet the animal control officer cert right now. The person we had last year traded physicians within the city and that's true. So the investment that we have in there is gone, and now we're looking for guidance here before we decide, you know, whether we pursue having another animal control officer or are we going to stay with the intact? Does the shelter still want to close this? What does it look like? So given that this was the one that had the most red dots, you know, looking at what could we do to lower the cost? And I have to say, none of these were great, so the type of decisions we've had. The first of which is a nature policy. So we are generally a no-kill shelter. The time that I've been here, we have three animals, one who was eerily dead from a fire, and two who had very severe medical incidents that they weren't able to survive. And so, but that's three dogs in three years. And, you know, all the rest of them have been able to network out pretty long. But unfortunately, we do have, especially within our local population, for example, we have two that passed in September. And no amount of marketing, no amount of outreach, no amount of adoption insurance and walking them through the neighborhood. Which are very few dogs, they've been in the shelter for nine months. And so that's taking away from staff time and resources, that's taking away from resources to be able to bring other dogs in. When we had ten, we're what we consider functional, so we can't really accept more dogs. We have twelve kennels, but we, our capacity to care for more dogs is too big. Euthanasia, if we went to the state mandate, completely minimum, that's seventy-two hours for a stray. And that's fourteen days for, I don't know, the, the dog. So this would dramatically lower our cost, but not completely, just because, you know, if you do have a dog in the cemetery and also in, even discussing with my staff, have the shelter, absolutely, let's say, as a shelter where this is the policy. So maybe there's a less strict option, you know, where we take, you know, grab a more arbitrary date, three months, six months, something like that. I mean, by the time we've had a dog in there for nine months, that's, that's cool to, to be, you know, speeding living. Our, our facility's not up to standard, it's, it's, you know, very small. And our great data we had in there for four months was pretty internalized. So those kinds of situations are pretty hard to break as well. So I don't recommend the euthanasia, but if that or a spectrum of options along that are more possible and would help us lower our cost burden. And then the other option is outsourcing. So we have been talking with the county main society, they're interested in potentially operating shelter under contract from us. In the discussions that we've had so far with them, it really looks to be saving us about sixty to seventy thousand dollars a year in loss for what they would want to operate. And it would lose the adoption revenue as part of that. So really, it's about, you know, eighty to ninety thousand dollars heading to the city, but then we're first, then sixty thousand dollar savings to the, to the city. So that being said, they can operate it, we lose kind of our span of control. But it's one less thing to worry about, we do end up saving in sixty thousand dollars, which in grand scheme is very much. It also is, is one of our core services, or would this be better applied by, and that's their sole function. And they have a broader network of tiers, donors, fundraisers, and interest in more plus program, providing professional services. So it saves us a little bit of the cost, approximately, third or fourth of our current pain. But it does pass that along to a better qualified, so, and frees up more of our internal time, so it's way from that. Now, that being said, we still have, you know, policy issues working, about surrenders and impound, with some eager dogs. Who takes on the animal control or specifically, which is unfortunately probably the fault of the combination of police officers and other police officers. So just things to consider when we're looking at options there. But those, those were the two alternatives to complete closure, identify. And complete closure, there's no other entity in this town that's just going to do this for, for free. County's not operating a shelter and society is already, sorry.
The county is mandated to have animal control, and we are not mandated to have animal control. So why aren't we calling the sheriff's department for the animals?
Well, we currently operate animal control, we have our own code, we have our own procedures, so we choose.
But if we didn't, would the sheriff be responsible for picking up these animals and doing anything with them? So I thought they were required.
They're not doing it in the county right now, right? Or they're doing it to them, they said, they're, they focus the animal control, you know.
But they're looking at it, if they were to get it, would we still be responsible for, for picking up animals or would the county be responsible?
Want to ask the chief of how much time would closing down a shelter affect the officers?
Uh, that, that's a hard thing to quantify right now. The way you respond to numerous animal calls throughout the week, so I think that could be a negative impact on our officers. And like, that hard calling would certainly increase responses.
And if you're taking dogs to adopt or to solicit, that's an hour.
So even if we cut the whole thing, it's just going to get shifted on, burdened to another part of the city?
Yes.
Do you think lowering costs, adoption fees would, would help move the animals a little bit faster? I mean, I know we've talked about this in the past.
Our, our, our fees for the harder to adopt dogs, the senior dogs, dogs with medical issues is a hundred dollars. It's fairly minimal, but instead of lowering it, we have no problem adopting out smaller dogs, puppies, they go with. And those fees at five hundred are kind of equally revenue generator for the shelter. Just because the, the puppies go really quickly before they spend the cost. They cost enough thirty-five dollars per night for a shelter. And so by the time we had a older dog, a harder to adopt dog there for, in three, four days, we're not even getting back our, our adoption fee. We do want some sort of fee in place for adoption. Because, I mean, first of all, if somebody can't afford to pay for the adoption fee, can they afford to pay for the food and medical care? And all that other stuff that goes with it, and also we have had a lot of pets coming in from our indigenous population into the shelter. And the last thing we would want is those pets going back out to that population. So.
So it seems like if we wanted to deal away with the shelter by going over to the humane society, but we needed to maintain uh, animal control, we'd lose money. Like, if, if we kept somebody on board to actually handle that as opposed to putting it off to code enforcement of the police. So I'm sure would be happy to not be doing that, so.
So, so you're correct, it doesn't save us so much.
I think that's a discussion about service levels, parks animal control too, right? That's next, Jay's next phase about those discussions, what is the industry service level of the council or animal control of the city?
I'm, I'm gonna ask the terrible question because it's on here. Like, have we looked and said, if we set a rule for euthanasia, and I definitely would not be, like, I'm probably the most for it on this council, based on everybody I've talked to about it, and I wouldn't be good with seventy-two hours. That's crazy to me. But have we actually looked at what the savings are on that, or is it just sort of like hypothetically, they're saying things there?
Well, for example, I mean, I, if we have two dogs that we've had since September, and the cost for those two dogs, including their medical care and, and the whole cost is four nineteen thousand dollars for two dogs that we have for the weekend. So, I, I mean, that's, that's cost in, costing staff time, costing medical care, costing that else. But it's also a cost, they can, we have a waitlist for surrenders, we have, you know, these two dogs, holding stalls for nine months. Our holding stalls that we're not able to bring in. So we're having to either turn people away, or, it's, last year, we had one living in the bathroom. Because we were thirteen dogs, literally, so, yeah, it's, it's difficult.
How much, I'm sorry, it sounds like you're really far away, but how much money did you say those two dogs have costed since September or October, whatever?
Uh, nineteen thousand dollars.
Nineteen thousand? Okay, thank you.
And, you know, depending on the dogs that we get in, I mean, the longer that we keep them, the more medical care we have to provide. You know, some dogs come in and just either spay neuter, which is, you know, two hundred dollars or less. And some need more extensive medical care. You know, they just signed three invoices last year for about eight hundred dollars a piece. And so, you know, we're, we're not operating this out of profit. No animal shelter in the country operates at profit, except for one that is contracted with so many other people that they're making money off the contract. That's, that's it, very few are, are able to, this is going to be a loss, but we just need to determine, you know, what is our, what's our threshold for that pay? And then the animal control discussion, again, goes back to the internal service way. It needs to be performed, someone needs to take care of, whether that's an animal control officer working their animal, they have a patrol division, orders, lease, I mean, the, the function is still there, there's still dangerous dogs, you know, entering people's yards and kicking out somebody's dog, or there's still, they heard about them this weekend, you know. There's still those functions that are occurring, you just need to know, do we need animal control specifically? Or are we, you know, is, is that a police function? I'm not just trying to find this, I guess, this is what I was asked, I gotta go to my doctor, I gotta answer for, so.
And you mentioned it was a thirty-five dollars per night per dog.
That's, if, if you take our entire budget and split it by the number of kennels, by the number of dogs, by the number of, yeah, it comes out to thirty-five dollars. So that's assuming fully loaded. Now, if we were, if we weren't fully loaded, if we had a policy where there was euthanasia and if we were at half the population rate or something, if we go up incrementally per dog, because now we're defraying those costs, so we're, we're counting for those costs over fewer dogs. So you would expect that number to go up a little bit.
So it kind of seems like with, any euthanasia policy would just increase our capacity and not really save us anything.
It would produce a lot of our medical costs, because we're taking in dogs now and, and giving them life-saving medical care and keeping them alive. And we're not going to, we're not going to do that if, if we're not setting up keeping them around. And then, sorry, this is a kind of an optional subject for me. It probably is for everybody, nobody wants, like, having to make these hard calls. But, but it is, I, I mean, the, the amount of money that we're spending on taking care of two dogs could have taken care of many, many more dogs during that timeframe, or could reduce our staff hours. We currently have one full-time day person, one full, one almost full-time weekend person. And another person who does nights and one day. And so when, when you factor all of that in, we could reduce the hours that we're spending on average. If we had fewer dogs, we would reduce our budgetary bills, we would, we would reduce a lot of the costs. But it would, and, you know, how dramatically we, the effect of that policy was, you know, if there's one or two dogs in here, it might reduce our staffing, but if we have five or six, we have basically full staff.
I'd be more interested in.
Dogs for the whole time, so it's not like those two dogs just eat the whole population at any point in time. You have to have staff on duty, you have to pound. For the record, I did not put a red dot on that shelter, so one of y'all put two of them on there, and it was me. I want that to be made very clear, and I like the idea of putting it back with the police department. If their primary function is dealing with law enforcement issues like the dog, for instance, like you said this weekend. Uh, I was very much, uh, got a whole lot of that. And this weekend was an absolute definite reason why we need animal control in the city and why it shouldn't go anywhere. The discussion about euthanizing dogs is gross, and I think the guys that you're having in here in this room is just gross to begin with, and I don't like hearing about it. So I just want to make my voice clear on that, I didn't vote against animal control either, I think animal control's a good thing. And I think that's something that was probably done a lot better when it was with the police department, because they have right there better communication when you're going into a traffic stop, when there's a dog acting crazy, you have, you know, you radio them in, that sort of thing. I like the idea behind that, and they were able to sit with derelict vehicles and stuff like that. But there's got to be somebody at the pound anyway, so when you have one or you have nine, it kind of is what it is, you're feeding dogs. It's not rocket science, you know, none of those things are, you're going to lift the dogs out, you got to feed them, you got to comb them, you know what I mean? None of that's rocket science, we could hire pretty much whoever to do that. Um, and that's what we've done, but whether there's one in there, or there's nine in there, it's the same job. I've been, spent a lot of years in that pound, and I know a lot about it and a lot about the history of it. I don't exactly agree with everything that was said here tonight, but I'm not going to get into that. What I will say is that I think we can afford to put a couple of extra dogs, a little bit of cable. I bet if you put a call out there for some donations, they'll be there tomorrow, in fact, I'll lead the train, so. Man, that's my piece.
I'd be interested in that outsourcing option too, the eighty thousand dollar savings, every little bit helps and just pushes it down line a little bit, but. So option one, I'm like.
If two is an option, then great.
I'm, I'm in line with the mayor. However, I don't want to cut anything, but that's, you know, that's not a reality. So I would like to increase what we're doing at the shelter, but we're at physical impact, so. I, I have no solutions right now, I'm gonna have to think about it. I pray.
There are only two options.
So we've, we've talked to one of the animal services in Olympia, and they're quote for services to be back for the free. So various, and they're very, I want to get, I think it was seventy-two. We can pay more money for basically the, the first time. So it doesn't save us a lot, well, it doesn't save us anything, costs us.
It seems like option two is the only option we really have, I'd like to know more, because it does seem like if we keep animal control functions and don't just lay that off on other staff, then we probably won't save any money and power to decide about how it should work out. So I'd like to know more about that, but it seems like maybe animal shelter and control might be sticking around because they're central.
There's a certain possibility that we could.
Melissa?
Yeah, I, I agree, I'm, option one is an option for me. I, I, pretty much what Tom and George just said, to be honest with you.
I wonder if there, I, I want to think outside the box, and if there are some amazing fundraisers we could do everywhere. This, this town comes together. We have amazing fundraisers in the town, I went to the chili park, hook up, it lasted three hours, maybe over three hundred thousand dollars. For a kid, that they, this town comes together. I don't know, maybe we need to do something fantastic to offset these costs. And maybe it's not our normal, this, maybe it's something else. Maybe, I mean, a chili pick-up is a little light, but wouldn't it be fun to have like a ball with the officers and maybe the dogs are included? Maybe we do something fantastic, maybe we start brainstorming, maybe we need to think bigger than this, the stock.
We were always just talking about a similar idea to that, people from Adopt a Pet, so we might be able to make something happen like that.
All right.
Adopt a Pet has a very good facility, they also have a lot of fundraisers, but they also allow the cleanments. So when someone passes, they have their whole estate to them, and they don't, they're a no-kill shelter, they've had dogs there for years. But is there, I asked this question before, is there a way to make it easier to donate directly to the shelter? Because people will more likely give money to dogs with a chance than giving it to the general fund.
And we could do QR codes, maybe, I don't know.
A, a, a.
The donation can be designated to a service. It does have to go back to the general fund. It's general not supported, but the donation can be designated. Service, much like it is a park, um, much like it could be a street tree or something like that. It can, you know, to shelter and be destined for the shelter.
So, like, I got my dog adopted pet ten years ago, and if I said, oh, I want to leave my will. Percentage of my estate to the city of Shelton's, um, animal control. That's the ball. In the, can we write that as a code?
Goes through proate and, and somebody, yeah, I mean, we actually received a donation, that should be years ago, thirty-five thousand, almost thirty-five thousand. And spent that over time on maintenance and upgrades and things like that, but obviously that was handled through, through pro, proate. We received a donation that was cutting our way.
Same with the library endowment, five hundred thousand dollars.
Around many, many years, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that opportunity is there. Is it advertised? I think anytime you talk about, you know, volunteer, um, coordination, fundraising, and things like that. It's been, well, been fundraising, especially, it's, it's a bunch of time to put that together, right? And so right now we're talking about capacity issues, but our basic services and going out and fundraising is not going anywhere, but that's gonna go. That be considered now to nonprofit organization that facilitates that? Is it a foundation, a shelter foundation that's formed or something like that? We'd be, you know, certainly willing and happy to facilitate that partnership.
So like creating friends of the shelter, or something like that?
Yeah, the questions first, yeah.
At the end of the day, as we grow, at the end of the day, we have X amount of shelter space, X amount of land, and then as we grow. That then is going to increase, usually we capital, capital means capital improvements. We just put a roof on it, have an HVAC unit, but it still is a cinder block. You know, structures, small kennels, they don't have E D, there's some issues about moving your kennels out, dangerous kennels moving in and out, things like that. It's really constrained and it's footprint, so the longer this, you know, this service remains, which sounds like that's, you know, that's the commitment, right? Um, we have to consider some investments down the road too, to make sure that we are providing the service that meets the balance of expectations.
Yeah, we are, you know, with the con plan members that we're working on, you've talked to us about before, and that's, that's correct, where they anticipate to grow. So even if we're dealable with the next, after years, and if that truly happens, you know, that's maybe double the size of the community. Facility that's still serving, so capacity issues that we have now.
And just for the record, the, the red dots, we had to use them and spend them without consideration costs. So this is an exercise that was given to the council, so, um. Now that we're looking at the numbers as well, we're integrating that into our decision-making. So it's gonna be tougher than the exercise we had that was without looking at the emotional cost to this. Just let people know that, uh, if this was a high red or six dots. It was because the, the task that we had to undergo was to make sure that we spent all our priority dots red. So it's not because that we're cold or heartless, it's because that was what's happening with our fiscal plan. This is like our, you know, our, our dinner table meeting. About what we gotta cut, you know?
I think council member could get more set at the, at the retreat, and so you can have further discussion, right? That's, so we can come back, we can have the discussion, we can have more specific, um, more specific point discussion about these items, so you can understand the costs. You can understand the options and give us some more information. That's exactly the, the exercise.
Right. I just want to let everyone know who is listening. Hi, mom, um, that, you know, we're starting that we're cold and heartless is because we have to make. Real decisions about what money's coming in and what money's going out.
All right, any other questions, Mark? Looks like we're interested in option two, more information.
So to refine that.
And then there's no way we can get our friends in the county to get into an ILA and do something together and not further spread out the costs. I mean, I think that's something that we could think about, gonna try to go outside the box.
You were waiting up a close one in the county. Last Saturday, they were a little bit of a service, so I'm not sure where that one falls now.
The county would have other animals, like horses and goats and cows that probably would not be. You know, city focused, but, I mean, it's, it's a big task that we could probably ask the county to step up and help us out here. So, uh, anyway, that's just another idea that we don't have to do it all by ourselves. We could ask the whole community.
Yeah, anything on before we, in the long, and the animal control portion of that? Chief, I think you've got next one, you're lying through this, or?
Yeah, um, so we currently don't. Specifically to staff, there's staff levels, and we are not able to provide that position to the school. Historically, we always had a school resource officer, resource officer, at least one, sometimes two, and sometimes three. Um, they would divide, we was at, um, school, I mean, primarily they would respond to, in a sense, it's a school or there. Kids and develop those relationships was also nice. They came, came familiar with officers and they, you know, we're, we're just in a, in a good spot. Where we can have good relations with, with the children, almost, we can say, you know, foster those. That helps. And we can live our lives in the future, so they organize us as products of that, and, and also they're purpose, if there was ever a major incident at the school. We already have an officer right there, ready to go. So that's always our sort of, we do those, those, it's actually, it's a proposition. Also internally, we don't have, um, it's not a big department, I, you know, I have officers, I want to do lots of things, and go less places. Available for altering positions or opportunities is limited, so that's just kind of one more thing that we don't get to. Have our officers experience or, you know. Lastly, though, um, the county is developing a new care program, um, so the reline device that. Interacting with the school students, so that's, that's also an option.
In the, in the past, the resource officer would pay by the school, correct?
Seventy-five percent in school and twenty-five in central state, had a payment, so core representatives last week and. Due to their military experience right now, they're only a twenty-five percent.
Five percent.
So it wasn't very advantageous for us.
Yeah, I, without those large contribution, I won't.
That was long when the cops ran to him, so, but.
I love the SRO program, but if we can't afford it, and, you know, obviously, and especially they're not pulling the bill there. Makes it hard to do all that. We have to take care of the, the people in the community.
Yeah, that's why I put a red dot on it. It's not that I'm opposed to the, the SRO. I think it's, it's a great program, but with the school district not having. The availability to basically pay for it and dedicating a full FTE, that it seems like we've had a hard time just filling the roles that we need on the street. So, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I think we're losing an opportunity not only to have better relations with the youth, but also in recruitment for the, for the, for officers. But just like the other member said, like, we hadn't had one in a while, so when it became apparent that it would cost us more money than. The split that we had before, that, that became an easier choice to utilize one of our red dots there, so.
Yeah, I agree. You said it was an unfunded program already. That's really why we didn't, you know, weren't looking to go back after it. And, um, yeah.
Melissa?
Um, I would honestly love to spread a figure out a way to, um, bring that back. I lost sound for a minute. What did you say the percentage was at with the school district or what the latest was on that?
Five percent.
Five? That's what I thought I heard. Okay. Oh, wow. Um. I think something to consider is, I, I think if we had an SRO back in the schools. I think down the road, long term, um. I think there'd probably be, uh, I don't know, I don't want to say less issues, but, um. Kids having that connection and having an SRO in the schools, um, I, I think at some point we would also see some sort of financial. Benefit from it, um. Uh, directing kids and, um, you know, having those relationships, and maybe they, some of them wouldn't get in as much trouble. I know a lot of teenage kids who, um, you know, have a lot of respect for a couple of the officers here in town who have told, you know, the kids have told me. That would be great if, if they were in the schools, um, and how helpful they think it would be. So, I mean, I get it, the five percent is. That's nothing. It's awful, but, um. At the same time, I think we need to consider the long-term benefits that it might, um, bring around also. I don't know.
We can afford it or they, I think, yeah, we will, we should definitely look at it again at that point. This isn't a forever, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I think the relationship with the kids was probably the biggest benefit that we've had, um, but my kids were in school during the SRO days and. And, uh, I think that's, that was a great benefit, but obviously it's not in the cards. Maybe we could, you know, when officers are busy. Once a month, they can go up and have to go to the assembly or something and hang out.
We have officers who go to special events at schools. We're doing one a couple weeks, and then my, well, yeah, Saturday. Um, you know, spending some time with the students and. Have those opportunities.
Yep. Great. Well, looks like, uh, at this point, I'm.
Nothing changed, though.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to museum operations. Um, as you know, the city owns the building, the parcel where the Mays County Historical Society operates the museum. Right down here at, uh, Fifth and Railroad, um. Our cost this year to provide maintenance and service there is sixty-seven thousand dollars. Knowing that we have a fifty thousand dollar investment in the funds or HVAC replacements. So without that, the operational cost of that seventeen thousand dollars. Um, we haven't agreed with Mays County Historical Society in twenty twenty-six. Um, for our lease essentially voting, and I have an upcoming meeting with, um, the SRO body, taking the director of the historical site. So discussions on, I mean, what their long-term intentions are, uh, if they have the ability to take, uh, take on a larger goal. Reunionship with the facility in the future.
Love to be doing new things with the race, but, um, I, I wonder if they have opportunities for. Grants maybe that, that they could look at and different things about the offer.
I, uh, I think that, uh, when the lease comes up, we should give them the building for free with deep restriction that it needs to be. Museum or give it back to the city at a future date, or even if somebody else wanted to run the museum after them. That is, that it's always an asset, museum asset of some kind, but, yeah, give them, give them the building and much. Or the mayor said, they can go out and raise a little bit more for a little bit of that, maybe our LTAC will get a hotel. And another hotel in town where we'll have a little bit more money, we can donate to their, to their operations down the road. Hopefully knock on wood, we get maybe hotels here. And that would help support their operations in a different way. Um, but, yeah, I think we should give them the ability. But these restrictions, yeah, they're solely.
I liked, uh, yeah, seventeen thousand dollars, but then again, you know, with the maintenance and the HVAC, which hopefully. Sounds like that one's been there for time in memorial, and hopefully this one will last that long as, as well, but, yeah. It is a liability to keep it around, but it's seventeen thousand dollars. It's not solving any of us problems by. But if we can give them the building, if we could do something like that and not endanger their operation, that would be.
I think it's much like the rest of our facility, the shelter and, which we've been talking about tonight, there's gonna be ongoing. Capital investment needs, especially building, built in the early nineteen hundreds, um, in order to, um, register, so that means. It's a little more expensive, and some of the work as well, and all the wood, there's decay, um, you know, dental work. And the fine detail work is all wood and, or five hundred years or so, um, that starts, starts degrading to a point where. It just becomes more expensive to, to replace.
Unless that's, it would be less insurance liability, correct?
It would reduce.
Like a classic car, I mean, it's labor-intensive and expensive, but is it worth it to have around and keep our history alive? I don't, I don't know if we have a return on investment to quantify that. But I think we're, we're losing a lot of our history, lost pancake breakfast thing, the turn, a big machine turnaround thing. Um, that the Kewandis did, and, um, so, I mean, it's another piece of our history that I, um, I'm sad that. We dedicated our red dots there, um, but, uh, how do we, how do we show, uh, return on investment? This is something the chamber could, could do to pump up their stats and pump up their recruitment and bring in more folks to come visit. But, um. Like I said, it's, it's a, it's a labor of love right now, and it's, it's, it's a little bit more costly than, can afford. Um, I like the, the idea that the mayor brought up, that if we could pass it on and have them. Maybe in, or, and Councilmember Sherman, if we could pass it on and they get, get more grants, because now that we have their own building, um. I don't know what they could buy for that, but, um, seeing that we have to cut X amount of million dollars, um. That this was something that, um, and knowing that the maintenance board will increase in the future, not decrease. It, it became, um, apparent that that was something that, um, we, we would have to let go if we wanted to make significant. Once of the budget, but this is even not being cut, so.
Well, in this, sorry, interrupting, this seventeen thousand dollars isn't providing any preventative agency, right? So we are seeing some degradation in the facility. You can truly maintain the facility where it should be. That's gonna be four or five times the change, I'm sure. Insurance structure is here, long-term.
And I think that the LTAC board next year, or the year after that, could, could look at this as more of a priority than some of the other things we're funding. LTAC dollars, so maybe that could help offset their utilities and some of the stuff too, you know, gas, the board.
Feel my being blunt tonight? We're facing about six hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six, and, and thinking about LTAC funds and maybe a hotel and stuff. Isn't giving us the feedback we need right now. I'm sorry, um, really, I know these are tough decisions, um, but.
Well, the, well, the feedback was that might be bad, but just give them, give them.
I understand, yeah.
And then, and I'm saying, down the road, here's some options. So the feedback is, I.
Yeah, and, and, and most of me, there are options, I, I guess, right? Okay, you know, I guess that's what, I mean, a clarification, if you want us to work on, on that with them, or if that's options.
No, that's not down the road. To keep them, keep them, keep them ready, but my, my, it's like, hey, we, we can't afford it, we.
My concern, if we, if we want to maintain all these services that are the lowest priorities to the, you know, to the media, or maintain a. High level of these services that were part of the retreat, we're gonna develop staffs, gonna bring back a bunch of. That may not meet your objectives, and it takes us long to get that down for you, right? We're, we're in a pretty, pretty good schedule right now, addressing this right now, June, second week of June. That starts really rapidly, time starts rapidly ticking away by the time we, I think, this budget done for you in December, especially with, uh, reduced staff. That's kind of why I'm, you know, I guess encourage you a little. That's kinda why I'm, you know, I guess encourage a little more, um, feedback and correction on, on some of these services.
But the unfortunate part about that is pragmatically, if we wanna cut six hundred thousand dollars largely out of these, it's basically the.
Everything.
Yeah. What would the building sell for if we just outright sold it? Would it be six figures?
Sure.
I'm just saying, it's like, if we wanna just make every decision based on dollars sets. Then why don't we just close it down and sell the building and then we get really close to closing that budget cap? I'm just, I'm.
I'm not saying that.
I'm not saying that's what we're gonna do, but I'm saying if we're gonna make these choices based purely on economics, then. Um, we have to put that on the table and say, do we have to, do we have the test of authority to do this? That's all.
I'll, um, end meeting with this this weekend. Engage your interest in what, you know, I think that they've been thinking about this, I think I know that they're thinking about the same thing, so. Let me just see later that, what the information is from the board of this kind of service side. All right, Jay Harris, wanna touch bases on the homeless camp, that's camps.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, public works streets brought around every day doing all sorts of things, uh. That, uh, with the homeless camp slash checks cleanup, um, garbage and graffiti. And calls that we get, uh, just of that and things. Um, so we, in our time card system, uh, we didn't have a budget for it in twenty twenty five. But, uh, the city manager in our time card dropped down, put homeless, you know, active, activity, things that we're doing. Uh, to keep city pretty, especially downtown, right? So, um, anyways, uh, that has added up, uh, so far a year to date, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, some of that has been going in and cleaning up some camps, been taken out, been going in. With people and pickups and that sort of thing, um, the Teresa Johnson Trail. Was that, I think that might have been last year was, I think it was last year, but that'd be an example where. There was a lot of things down below and the only thing we can do is walk them out, right? We got above, got a slope, um, that sort of thing, so almost have an impact on our community. And, uh, the workforce to clean these things up is in the public works, uh, street department, so, um. That, I mean, we might do, like, next year is actually budgeted an amount and try to stay within that budget. Rather than just saying, hey, we need you, we need you, we need you, get it on your time card. You know, and it expands out, um, the city manager actually had, you budgeted something for homeless camps, I can't remember what that was. Just in total.
Yeah, so six thousand, we'll be slidors for, um, for dump fees and. Centimeters.
Yeah, so you can see the impact is large, um, and so that's one of those service levels where you can do nothing, right? But, uh, it does, somebody will need to be doing some of these things to keep mostly the downtown, uh, uh, cleaned up. So, uh, decision point, how many thoughts do that?
Some of our, some of our water property, well, not water property, some of our general fund properties are awful, I mean, by the way, it's. You know, attract, attract some of this activity too, so we have to, we have to go into some of these. A lot of water department, so you need to, you need to look towards these, but try to track these the best we can.
So every Monday, we walk every property and to, uh, report code enforcement, what's going on, who's in there, you know. Is there any garbage, uh, that sort of thing, and try to stay on a, on a weekly basis and, uh. So that's part of this cost too, is guys walking the Teresa Johnson Trail, see what's going on up there. You know, uh, going up the neighborhood tracks to some property, we don't know there, see what's going on on our site. There's, it's activity on sites next door, um, that sort of thing, so we're trying to keep an eye on it. Uh, cause if you don't monitor sites, uh, it, it bad quickly. And we, we found that out, you know, the hard waves, but a few years ago, that we had to go in and really clean up a site and, uh. It took, it took a lot of time and it's easier to monitor it and try to, you know. Discourage the activity and keep it cleaned up than it is to let the activity occur and to incur very large costs. Uh, to remove a lot of items later, it was a little more proactive.
So, didn't we just get a quote for like ninety four thousand dollars for the cleanup? Or whatever, yeah, that's a big one, and that's not.
Hasn't, hadn't authorized any, because I haven't brought it to council.
Right.
I'm hoping that we hear back from Navy for access to the tracks that we used that cost if. We brought it forward, but I still have that coming, coming second.
And I feel like it's. Compared to our waterway.
No, the cost is gonna get any, any better, it's probably gonna increase, because people are gonna be leaving the park here in about. Uh, ten days and going back up trails and back up the tracks and wherever else in the woods they can find, so we're gonna be. Going further to clean up here shortly, so I, I don't think that's gonna decrease, I mean, I, I. Shouldn't even be an option, because we get, we gotta, we gotta keep these clean, the best we can, so I don't know if that's even an option. Might be, still gotta, still gotta do it, still gotta dump garbage cans, no matter where they are, still gotta go. And set the trails.
What's there to say, it's a service that's kind of the fundamental service of running a city, I think, is, you know. Regardless of how we wanna label it, this is about keeping. Things clean and I think that is the most basic level of expectation we have from the people who live here, so. They don't see any way around this one, fortunately.
I think in development of budget, you know, city manager and I and, uh, other public work staff. Try to get our arms and, and the police department around the problem a little more and identify the cost. We have enough history and data. That, uh, it should, we should, maybe have a line item that, uh, is a little higher, but it's more budgeted. We'll be able to more proactive as one settlement, so, I mean, to total, the cost at the end of the year. Being proactive rather than reactive will actually decrease cost over time, does that make sense, right? So like maintaining a rope on your house or anything, so, uh, I think we need to quantify that cost and, and try to get a better handle on it. You know, and not clean up every bottle cap and all of that, depending on where you're at. Do a good job and, and keep it up to a standard and, uh, and, and get that in the budget for you guys to review.
Yeah, if it's not like water from a property, can we use the water fund for, for those cleanup instead of general fund dollars?
The water utility, yeah, it's a, it's not best use of funds in the water utility, but.
General fund is a big problem.
There's a potential, there's potential surplus in some of these properties too, and paying them off with public ownership. So, so we alleviate some of those issues, we don't have to maintain them, insurance, some insurance burdens at the same time, so.
Some of the pieces that aren't solvable.
Doing some, you know, doing some more intensive review of the properties or the whole, there's any long-term issues for these and. And surplus of that, you know, sell. Put it back on the actual.
Think we did it, we'd be doing, putting asset, a couple of years ago, Joe was here.
We've got a map, we've got certain properties that prioritize, yeah, some of our properties. Like the ones, uh, I think three years flat, there's some, not marketable, exactly right, you got access, the slopes, there's no access, the other. A navy hill pit running through the middle of it, you know, the, uh, a property just to the west sold a couple of months ago. Five thousand dollars, right? Um, and that was one of the private property, and there's had a couple of cabins on that, and they're absent to owners and then.
You know, something like that actually costs us, you know, costs the city money demands, especially for one process, you know, there's work on managing, so.
I think one of the weaknesses in the process when we did this was when we break it down individually by one item at a time. We're not looking at the web or the, the fabric, we pull that fabric, it's gonna mess up everything. The whole, the whole plot, this is one of those areas. Um, but for example, when Jay talked about how if we don't have the animal shelter, then it falls on the, on the police force. So that's, you pull that thread, but you mess up, you know, the pattern that we have for the whole city, so, um, this is one of those areas where. It. There's a big web of things that connect to each other that if we don't act here, then it's gonna cost us more overall for the whole city. So, um, I want us to think about that when we also go through this process, is what does it also affect? Were there other things that, that cutting this will affect the whole web, what we do in the city? And we take for granted how much, how interrelated we are, how often costs are. And how much staff time, and if someone doesn't pull their weight over there, then it goes, floods the zone for someone else. So I think that we need to keep that in mind as, as the council members here, that what we do. For to one section is gonna affect three or four other sections if we don't do this cutting properly. So, um, just, just to put it out there.
I think to expand on that, there's, there's a public expectation too, for services that we're providing, right? So regardless of whether we fund it or not, or whether we have the people to perform that function, so maybe the expectation of the public. Just take, you know, take animal control, it's, it's not funded, the expectation of the public is if there's a dangerous dog and there's a dog loose in the community. The city is going to provide that service, uh, so we need to be able to communicate to the public what that service may be.
And we even talked about insurance reliability about not doing things, so, um, that's a whole nother issue. So, um, when we make these cuts, we need to decide what are the short-term and, and long-term possibilities that happen here. So, and like I said, if I had my druthers, it wouldn't cut anything and add more people, but that's unrealistic, so, um, let's move on, move forward.
Melissa, do you have anything?
Oh, sorry, unmute my help. I, I don't have anything to add right now.
That's the estimate that we already got, plus a year to date right now, and then you're gonna double that, because we're in June. I mean, we're between hundred thirty, twenty, hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, hopefully, like, instead, we'll be up enough on it that it won't, won't be that hard of a time, right? Like, maybe, can you clean your house while you're at this, maybe you keep up, but this is the best. But, yeah, that's, that's a shock, right?
That's kind of the goal of the city.
Yes, definitely.
Hey, wanna move on to library? Uh, so the city offers, provides library through the interlocal agreement, regional libraries. Standard agreement they have with, with municipalities, um, they, by RCW. To local regional library district is authorized to provide library services within rural areas, not in, not in municipalities. Uh, yet through, in twenty ten, about, I think. Thousand nine, two thousand ten, about, and it's the city has shelved it in considering the regional library district, so they, they levy a property tax for their operations. Prior to that, the city paid for operations for the library, so those, as well as provided the library structure. Uh, and facility out of agenda. Right now, our budget. It's just over four hundred thousand dollars, um, they're open seven days a week, we invite a custodian there, essentially every day. That's also maintained, so we can provide utility services, um, there's, in addition, we have some HVAC, um. Repairs that are, um, pledged for this year, um, and more to come essentially. I mean, envelope of the building is in good shape, I mean, uh, you know, we're up, it's just a few years old, we aged out, a couple of years old, that was just, uh, repaired. Uh, in water, remembering railings, that, that, um, that's complete and then. The library district did a refresh on the inside a couple of years ago, with some paint on the walls, new flooring. Uh, that, that, the shelter structure below, and we did the, all the restrooms upstairs, so. Um, you'll see over a few columns. And about a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars a year for insurance on the facility. I had a meeting earlier today with, um. Cheryl, they went to executive director of the regional library, just told her we're having this conversation and that more for later, um, expressed. The same budgetary constraints from them is what many municipalities are seeing, um. They're levying at twenty-two cents per thousand, they've got over three hundred employees, three hundred and ten, maybe seventy years ago, about two hundred and sixteen employees. Uh, now have the region librarians and librarians in each of their buildings, um, so they're, they're facing some same. Some same issues that we are and trying to navigate through that, so, um, I didn't. They get into too many more details, you know, I wanna, um, input from the council on what kind of conversations, um. You'd like me to have further with that, to the regional library staff.
Is it possible, like, what the mayor had mentioned with doing with the museum? Letting them take ownership of the building, they're probably no longer in charge of it, in a term, and the thing, as if they were to. Sell it, then it goes back to the city, is that an option?
I don't think it's a viable option with discussion, just because. Taking on maintenance operation and facility without having that budget, and it's a five, it's a five county district, and so. They have municipal libraries throughout that district, and so. That might be, if, if they set that precedent here, that might be a request there, certainly the budget doesn't, doesn't allow. So I don't think that would be their first choice, there might be an option in there though, I'm more persuasive enough for a company agreement. Who knows, but just the twenty minute conversation I have for today. They choose to let that as a viable option.
I, I, um, I definitely think in the library, I definitely think if they can clean their own bathrooms, we're trying to figure out how to clean our bathrooms. I think the library can clean their own, we're paying their water, the power, the insurance on the building, liability insurance, I mean, I think. That is good phase, that is being good partners with the library and keeping the service, I think us cleaning their bathrooms is. A little bit over the top, I at least building, I hope it's to come and clean my bathroom, but, um. I, I think that at least staff would save us what, uh, you know, pull FTE eighty grand, ninety grand.
Well, I, that's hard to say, because again, if you cut that FTE. You've got no backup for the existing, we did that back in twenty-three and through twenty-four, you had one custodian, so we're back filling that with maintenance order, that's not changing light bulbs and ballots and. Waxing floors and so. Yeah, that's potential, but it, as Councilman Goodear says, there's that, you pulling that thread out of the sweater and get, kinda good on unravel. Of it, you know, vacations are tough to cover.
So we have more work here in Civic Center that's, certainly that's not getting addressed, I mean, we're hired out to strip the floor, we probably could have done that if we had that. Our own person for that, they weren't cleaning the library bathroom.
What I'm saying is you can't, really, if you cut that custodian to make that savings around FTE, um. We still have the, the work to do here and that's tripling that, you're not, if you're doing more work here, you're not cutting that FTE, right?
Oh, so you're saying that who wouldn't save?
I mean, unless you cut the FTE, and you would be saving money, but you're deferring maintenance, you're impacting other services, yes, so. It's, right, it's that thread you're following, and it can happen, I mean, we, we did it in July one twenty-three and one twenty-four. Um, and. And we worked through it, but again, the floor looked like it did three weeks ago. That's a bad, it didn't really seem so, seven agents that, that needed, so. Um, you just have to prioritize, that wasn't a safety issue, right, or look back, it wasn't a trip hazard. Uh, you know, it wasn't an issue that created liability, um, address liabilities first and foremost, and then if you've got time. Um, resources, you put it towards, uh, some things that, that you want, if you don't want to do, that much you need to do.
Um, other than police and emergency. Um, other than police and emergency services, the one thing that I do not wanna cut, in fact, I wanna increase, is the library. Not only is it a source for low-cost family entertainment. You can bring your child or young ones there, um, you don't have to buy anything off Amazon, you don't, you can borrow a book. You, there are a lot of other services there, there are movies, there are places to go when, you know, frankly, some folks send their kids there for babysitting. Um, because there's staff there and they just read a book and then they get picked up later. I know I did that when I was younger at our local library when I was growing up. And it's, it's a safe place to be. It's open seven days a week. The bathrooms are affected by the closure of both the shelter and the park being, folks being removed from there. So the library is a community service that I do not wanna cut, in fact, I wanna increase the services that they get. And we should make, the library is a source of pride, the library is a source of something that we are doing well. Have you been in there lately? It's beautiful, air conditioned. Um, you can expand not only your time and your family time, but also your own personal mind and, and and actually stop and think and not be so rushed about the world. And it's one way we can fight against the technology zombies that we're, we're raising nowadays, is the library. And if you haven't been there, go in there, get your library card and see all the benefits that you can get from the library. You get free photocopy services, um, they have backpacks that you can check out and go on hikes. Um, it's just a wonderful service that is really civic pride. If you're really proud about being a Sheltonian, go check out our library and how beautiful it is, how well-maintained it is, how welcoming it is, and how how great the employees are there, helping you find out whatever question you might have about anything in the world, is the library. So I, I will, I will expend all my energy and efforts to make sure that the library does not get cut in any way. And that if we find any kind of money that we increase library services, that's my piece, thank you.
Well, we wouldn't necessarily increase library services, we don't offer the library services, they offer their own services.
Well, we, we bought them more often, I don't know.
We paid in, well, we, we just finished, we, we paid insurance, we paid the, the light bill, we paid the water bill. You know, we maintain the property, we don't offer the service, library offers the service, that's their job, their intertaxing district, they get their own tax dollars, operate their, their thing. So, you know, we're a partner in that with all of what we're offering, and all I'm saying, saying is, you know, they can clean their own bathroom. That's all I'm saying, that we need the service, I agree with you one hundred percent, it's definitely an asset for the city and to the kids nursing, in the low-income city, and we, we need it. But I'm just saying that, you know, there's, that's just one, that was just one thing I was thinking that could say, could say a little bit, so. But no, I, I agree with you, it is an asset, but we, we don't expand the service, I mean, that's, that's their, that's their thing, that's their business, they're the lead C of our building, really. But they're great leaps, by the way, but yes.
For top numbers though, and you're looking at the twenty, twenty-six fiscal impact as we are, other than IT, it is our biggest expenditure on here.
Yeah, me too, my daughter likes library too, but unfortunately something we're gonna have to cut, and that seems like a whole lot of money right there to be put into taking care of that building there, I think the library should be able to fund itself as junior taxing district, and we need to have a conversation with them about how they can do that. And, uh, get us out of the four hundred thousand dollars a year at the library business.
The one thing that was brought up today is, um, there'd be local interest with the levy lift, so they couldn't pay that. Um, they obviously have to run that in all five counties, and there's two hundred in some taxing districts within, within their district, so there's, there's a lot of impact, right? If they, if they raise their levy rate, it could impact junior taxing districts, letting the small part districts and secondary districts, and I forget who's, who's going to be libraries, so. Um, that's one thing Cheryl told me today is. You know, that's a consideration, there's other rule, I think it's, um, for Vancouver Library District, she said. Um, Vancouver is running the levy lift, um, August fifth. And they're facing significant cuts if that is in the past. Now, there's a lot that, maybe five counties or some cities, that's around that.
That's another issue is if we do not fund this at the current levels, and we pull this out, this thread, then the other libraries in the whole region will have a precedent to not fund their libraries, then we'd lose all the libraries. So that's a real concern for me. I think, um, one of the big problems with this one, I would love to see them take this on themselves, I, I levy lift lift for them is something I personally would support, but I, I'd love to take this off of our books, but right now, we, our taxpayers are paying for our library through their property taxes. And if, if we give the library a reasonable leave, they're still serving our community and we're still paying for it, whether we have a library or not. We'll save a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars a year, you know, right, that's what we are. Um, you know, plus the maintenance if they were to leave, if we gave them no choice but to leave, which is kinda what it sounds like you're saying. If we say, well, you have to take on the building, you have to take on the insurance, you have to take on all these things, like like was just being mentioned, other jurisdictions will be the same, and we gotta cut something, and I get it, but this is actually value for money because people are paying for a service they will no longer get and still pay for it if we lose the library. I'm talking about a lot of other things on this list, I like the museum, but people won't be paying for it if we stop having. If we stop having animal control, people will pay for it in a different way, but they want to be paying taxes into that service the same way that they are paying into the library now. It's, uh, I don't see a benefit in forcing people to pay for something that they no longer get. So we need to keep the library here so people get what they're paying for.
Well, it says right here, options and alternatives, moves to online library digital services. My daughter uses a lot of that online digital services, that's the really big option here that they push with the school too, so. I mean, you just don't have a physical building, you still have a library, you can still give all that stuff delivered to your house.
That's part of the disconnection I was talking about of technology, like we're heavily on technology and not about the given experience anyone. And library is a place to have that given experience.
Melissa, you have anything on this?
Um, how many hours a week, Mark, do you think, um, we're doing custodial work at the library?
Forty.
Oh, forty a week?
Essentially an FTE to do custodial work in that, in that building, because they're only seven days a week. It's very well used, so, yep, and I think it's sort of divisions.
Pretty big.
Three thousand.
That big, wow.
Between downstairs and upstairs, yeah.
So really quick, uh, we're missing something on the corner, five thousand dollars, that is because of the improvements we're doing this year. I said it, I heard it out loud, it's really the one thirty-two a year. Correct, never got that. Is that included FTE, the one thirty-two?
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure where, the one thirty-two, sorry. Because one thirty-two is the insurance.
Oh.
I mean, I think, I think he might, might be talking about maintaining the building. You know, and library services go the digital. And when you, the city still has a building.
Can we, can we get the, what it actually costs us for utilities and?
Well, yeah, the, the budget.
The budget's one nine? Was, uh, well, it says four oh five, but that's minus the big improvements that we did this year, right?
That's me, though, the repairs for that.
Okay.
And the left, well, sorry, the deck repair and the HVAC combined were out of reach, you know, the grant seventy thousand dollars, get that. But to the regional library also contributed twenty-three thousand dollars to that project. Library endowment funds as well as re-apply. But yes, I will get.
You said there, yeah, one hundred and thirty-two thousand for insurance, professional services, so that would, professional services would include the cleaning, no?
No, professional services might be, if we contract out, like, um, HVAC repairs. Um, carpet cleaning, if that's the case, you know, any, anything we had to contract with outside services are, are our custodial services are, are combined within a facility's budget overall.
Broken.
Let's go home.
Did that start on, on Zoom or on?
I'm still here, that was weird.
Here you go, I'm gonna go back to recording.
Okay.
So are we at, we need more information on the, on the?
Yeah.
I thought you were back.
Recording, I'm sorry. Any questions on? With that one? Oh, you were. Okay. I'm sorry, towers. I'm still at one eighty. I believe it on Mike Givens. Process that's for the man?
Oh, yeah.
I did that on this.
Welcome back. So I was gonna say that looks like we're looking for more information on the actual, the actual, without the improvements that we're doing this year, which looks like it's one thirty-two plus the FTE, but is that what we're, where we're going?
I've got. So existing budget this year for libraries, four oh five, without custodial services.
Correct, and that's with the repairs, the HVAC.
Correct, so. Yeah, off, off some thirty fifteen, four ninety, we've got, um, oh, sorry, library. Um, insurance is nineteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-four, and professional services sixty-four, utility services thirty-one thousand four, four ninety.
And utilities are part of their standard ILA, so they expect everybody to do that.
Until the end of twenty-six, right?
No, no, this is, this, this is basically a, this is, this agreement's been in place for a number of years and just reuse continuously, then the museums do in twenty-six.
Okay. Maybe this conversation would be the, about, you know, obviously with, we have to keep insurance free on the building. So maybe the discussion would be the FTE and the, and the utilities, I mean. And if they have to do a little bit left to do that, and they'll do that, so. And then, and basically just insurance we're paying for.
As long as the building belongs to us, those have to be managed.
No, I, no, I, I agree, big maintenance, yes.
We have to maintain our assets, I started last, it's gonna cost us a lot more in the future, yeah.
But as Mark just said, we just need paint, new roof, new deck, new insight, so it's probably good for ten years until we build, until we build Shell Hills out get a couple Costco's in here, you know. Hey, think big.
I'd settle for a windmill.
I'd settle for a windmill.
You're missing out, buddy.
Does that, did you got enough mark or do you need more?
Yeah, well, I'll have some more discussions and. We'll bring it back.
Okay, do we have Melissa back yet?
Yeah, I'm here.
Do you have anything before we move on?
Uh, no, I'm I'm good on that with a little more somewhere info coming, yeah. Ready to.
Thank you.
So I'll speak to courts a little bit. As you know, of course, set the former government, um, they're managed, um. A lot of what they do is manage the office administration first at the state level, so they have to ask first. The hours they will operate at a rule of court, so essentially. What um, how? How this functions and how it counts the functions and the good will the budget be a good budget, but will determine. Where they would be spending services, um, if they have the ability to. New staff based on suggest reduction, uh, whether it it changes their operations in terms of service, you know. Function or something like that, that's that's something that they would determine, the general judgment. That would be operating in twenty twenty-six budget.
Would this be a proper discussion where kind of the idea I've mentioned to you the last couple of days or?
I'm open to any discussion.
I mean, I love our court system, we've got a great cooperation here, but we're we. We cannot have a court system, we can actually contract it to county district court and they can actually run it. We're spending about seven hundred thousand dollars a year right now on a court plus public defender and prosecutor. Maybe maybe we can pay the county three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand and save seven hundred thousand dollars a year, um, I I mean. It's really a big option, it's a lot of money, it's a huge savings and. I'm probably gonna be like paid account, we're saying, you know, I I think it's I think it's really an option for us to look at closely and see. If we can maybe work out a deal with the county, uh, district court, you know. And save save half the money, at least half of one.
But I mean, there was no dollar.
It's because it's not part of something that I talked to judge about, a different judge and. I mentioned to Mark and. You know, he's gonna do some research on it, but it's.
You know, I wouldn't, I don't know if it's a common practice, but as a practice, you'll see that city will engage this and need to contract with their standing down for news and court services. Also, um, providing some court services for, um, some water and basing down that economy of scale that they can perform those functions. Potentially, but it's not, it's not a foreign concept.
Well, if we do that, then why don't we just contract the police force to the sheriff's department? You know, but I mean, but we need to have justice locally, we need to have, we need to have local. In the city. Jurisdiction, we need to have a shelter PD, we need to have a shelter court. That's, and I'm not gonna budge on that.
I think PD and a court. And actually, I think it would probably cost more than social boost department, so. I it's just a thought, it's just a thought, it's. It's district.
I think those discussions are long term, you obviously have. A a court system that struggles taking over the rural area, um, with public defense attorneys. Um, potentially, you know, it's a mode on prosecution, um, there's a lot of moving parts that you need to work out. Court space and any administrative agents that that are affected, you know, every quarter you're straight, we have record stories. New service program, judge, so. Quite a few moving parts and and pieces to what municipal court offers, so I don't think we're looking at it. Occur in twenty-six or even be considered in twenty-six, but certainly is worth discussion, I don't think anything's off the table. About discuss how providing services now.
And the and the bar association recommendation to the superior court about. Public defenders, it's gonna be a huge problem down the road as well, but. You know, we need three, three or we need one, we'll need about three or four defenders that passes, which looks like it's going. Be adopted by the Supreme Court, we'll actually hear more about that tomorrow, roughly, yeah. So I mean, I just think it's bought, it's a huge amount of money and we could probably save seven hundred thousand dollars a year, maybe. Six, seven thousand dollars a year. We're paying about a million bucks right now, so.
So, sorry, with with defense.
Defense project is about a million bucks, so. We could, we could save half that money by this report taken on municipal. Conversation.
At the cost of justice, yeah.
I mean, I I think a municipal court is important for us to give our own voice, or not ours, but like the city has the ability to. Appoint its own judge and determine how justice laid out in our jurisdiction, so I think that's really important, but I also think the conversation is important. And understanding what value we're putting on that is important, so if. Yeah, if you can save seventy percent on court costs, there's, that's a different discussion. Um, so I think it would be good to know, especially.
Not privy to any of the details, but I know several years ago. For the city and at that point, it was deemed either. Unfeasible or they just didn't have interest.
Interesting concept. We definitely need police. And I don't wanna see the police go anywhere, um, I'd definitely be interested to hear. More about contracting, I know all we're doing here is misdemeanors and EWI's, things like that, and most of the. Felony level or the high level cases that happen in the city go to the county court anyway. So, you know, it's a small percentage of what's really actually done here, and if we can figure out a better way, definitely open to hear more.
Yeah, same, um. I, obviously, it's I I don't think it's ideal and I'd like to see it stick around, but I also think it's worth, um. Another conversation and getting some more info on numbers.
I think. I think. They do a really good job, so I would hate to see that go, but. If the information is there for us, might as well take a look at it. If it's. You know.
We went off the list.
Uh, we're down to special event permits, um, and what most of this happens occurs with the awards department. With street closures and things like that, so Jake and Harris can speak to this.
Yeah, uh, so special event permit, uh, was a city court's office actually issued them up until the start of the year. Uh, we have admin support, uh, that is taking this task on and, um, so there's a bidding system. You submit application and then we browse it around and, um, with with we want your traffic control plan. Uh, we get an insurance certificate, you know, before we issue the permit, which is really key here. So, uh, then you have the cost of actually physically putting out barricades, closing the street, picking up garbage, running the streets super now. You know, there's a lot of things that are street department, uh, to support these does. Um, so a couple of the ideas is, um, is to maybe, uh. Look at the masterpiece schedule this fall, we're doing it with the budget and have a conversation, maybe recoup some of the street costs. Uh, some of the maybe the admin costs, um, obviously, you don't make money on this type of thing. But maybe recruit some more of the costs might be part of the conversation, um. In my opinion, the events are great in this community, they define this community, uh, people have a lot of pride in these events. And so in no way am I saying, you know, that I think that we shouldn't eliminate the whole program. But we can look at the revenue side of the program a little bit and and have some good conversations. Um, about that, how the professor issue, how much they cost, um, I have a master fee schedule, I thought. And I actually bring it with me, but the event permit's small, I think it was like thirty-five dollars and, uh, the. Pretty small for some of the larger events, right?
Uh, and it's a nonprofit event, um, it's just a permit fee. Twenty-five and then twenty-five dollars, so yes, exactly, it's just basic services, if there's any barricades and that can be. That can be all. If it's a, if it's an event per fee schedule that charges a admission fee and rate age restricted. We determine what the total cost of that service would be, um, including labor and materials. And, uh, for example, uh, an event on the road that like closes the street down for, um, a street dance or something like that. Sponsored by a local business, that would be. Being on severe garden and things like that, so that'd be age restricted to take it, so our time during it could set up the barricades.
A little bit of garbage, maybe around the street scooper, that's the thing.
So that's already, we're already getting caution recovery on those events. Right, so it's a nonprofit.
Potential, you know, I mean, that doesn't cover, that doesn't cover it, we're not building an administration, any PD time, anything like that. If they wanted an officer there and we could supply that, that would be built directly, but it's just more awareness police officers. Cause the events going on, it might be bigger garden or something like that, and be aware of that, we don't, we don't add that hours into. We don't have hours for staff, for PD for.
Right now, we have the Forest Festival and the Christmas Parade as well.
Oh, we have our show downtown, we have the art walk, we have. The expo, yeah, a rally.
The year before, they did like a sidewalk sale thing on third where they paid for.
Point in time count, I think, those are special event permit process as well, um, the turkey trot. Uh, for everybody in elementary school, it's not on railroad, but it's over there on, uh, Franklin Franklin.
And how much would, I mean, if we eliminated everything, what would it stand?
Um, we we don't, we haven't captured the true cost for for, um. For the non-montory events, we have a track, I know there are a few more that force us, and we should have some numbers for you what that looks like. If you're talking about coming in and putting up barricades. Um, on four or five different intersections, uh, depends too, if we have call in for overtime. Um, we have a minimum call in for our our union staff and then we'll call out if they have to come back in to take those downs. And it could, it could build up to a few hundred bucks.
If you increase the cost thirty-five dollars, you double it, it's almost seventy dollars, it's not really helpful, but.
Yeah, that's kind of the theme tonight, right?
Right.
I'm gonna look at whatever cities do, uh, you know, cities have events. And, uh, we'll get back to you folks, you know, on whatever cities do in terms of their fee structure and that sort of thing. Uh, Jay, I mean, you might be aware, uh, other fee structures that I'm aware of. I mean, is it more than thirty-five dollars at every places or is that seen?
I mean, in other places I worked. Even for nonprofits. Commercial events are always cost recovery and in some cases. Just depends on, you know, between these priorities, I mean, what are we trying to do with it? Now, are we trying to recover costs or do we recover our costs in other places? If we're at three thousand people down, down spending money in all our businesses for our law, for example. You know, are we more than making that backup in sales terms, and so just being, you know. It's it's a question asked, right?
There's intrinsic value there too, right?
Maybe if we charge a thousand dollars and. That would involve it, but like we charged four thousand dollars to the art, so oh, we can't do it, or how much did we lose out? In total economic value, so let's.
And if we're gonna continue to be Christmas Town USA, we need to have a Christmas festival, so. You know, uh, there are things that we cannot backslide on.
I I I think the reason that just a little is. I mean, it's 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 not too much, that's also.
Yeah, it definitely costs recovery for for profits, and people, like you said, going to get alcohol, that's what they should be paying their share. We have to have a cop there to retain for that as well, nonprofit, you know, the port, all that stuff, excuse the event, that's we're we're sponsoring that by closing the roads. And doing doing that.
One consideration we took, uh, several years ago was L-TAC funds offsetting some of those costs, some of these events are already receiving L-L-TAC funds.
Can't be talking about, I'll talk to them right now.
The decisions makes, right, right, uh, but but that could be a consideration as well as how how are those funds? Because truly the larger, you know, events, especially nonprofit events, who didn't have an element tourism today.
Yeah, absolutely, that sounds like an idea too.
We'll know better when we have some numbers for festival.
But I that's to get, yeah, we're just committed partners, kind of like, I think, from all the events, or 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 shares usually. Providing those services too, so, yeah, I don't raise it to even thirty-five to seventy, sure, that doesn't sound like that's gonna. Gonna stop Forest Festival from running or the car show or something like that, so I I that. That could help a little bit if we get another thousand dollars to be.
I don't know, how many, how many special events do we have annually done? Twenty-five. So at the end of the day, as you're talking about just the nonprofits, it's, you know, it's half, two thirds of those, call it. Whatever, call round up to twenty, you know, under thirty bucks.
Yeah. Let's let's just make sure we got a cost recovery from profit for profit companies that are that down there and.
Maybe look at LTAC.
And look at LTAC.
Okay, maybe get some better numbers.
I I definitely think that, um, LTAC could help do these things we have going on tonight also. I don't wanna say, I'm gonna get yelled at again. We can apply for our own LTAC dollars, you know that, right?
Yes.
Like I said, let's.
There's some things that are identity based, like the Forest Festival and Christmas Town that we cannot go back on, I think.
Oh, absolutely, no, this, we're not even talking hardly any money here, really. I know, fixing a thousand dollars to try and get.
That's why discussions are so difficult, and you saw that through the God exercise, right, where, you know, literally trying to split hairs here.
You know, and you served us lunch there, so, you know, come on, man.
One thing that wasn't put on there was cost to the street, uh, inclusion, contribution to the street fund, four hundred thousand dollars as a parent. This is a street fund activity, barricades, picking up garbage, they're doing things, so. Even though it's called the street fund, that general fund contribution is economic development, the community, same thing with the homeless, right? Street guys are out there doing that too, so, I mean, we have the word street on it, cause those are typically employees. It's different, right, so that there is value, it's just not like they're patching poples with the four hundred thousand dollars. They're providing a lot of community services also in there.
Right, I don't, do we have Melissa, Melissa, you have anything on this?
Melissa? Kinda delayed, sorry, um. No, I don't have anything further on that.
Alright.
So, um, the next line was the homeless response, we we talked about it before and, um. Admin, we budgeted six thousand dollars, we're at twenty-four, two ninety, seventy-five to eighty, because of. Cheers, so, uh, again, that's. Dump fees, um, the current, the two cent. Dump fees, um the current, the two sand and we have in place right now, um occurring, the cost for, um suddenly, I'm sorry, around ten. Primarily on general property.
Feel like we already touched on that, you know?
What about the dump fees that might help uh is, uh I'm gonna be coming to you about uh. Uh in our, even our fund about getting a hook truck. But what that does is allow us to buy our dumpsters and pull them up on the truck and take large. Uh in receptables, you know, big thirty yard dumpsters to the dump of things, that can be total horse items, garbage from all these buildings. That sort of thing, so that hook truck, that will be one use, uh a Sanders, another use, uh hauling equipment is another use, it's a rollable type purpose. So, uh over time, you know, some of those those costs could go down a little bit, uh for for cleanup, we can actually take the dumpster to the site. With the hook truck, leave it and then come pick it up, that's sort of thing, I mean, go to the cleanup event, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we put a twenty yard dump truck in certain places? Fill it up and then take it, and staff wouldn't have to be. Going back and forth, but, yeah.
A hook truck? I'm not sure, I'm I'm gonna ask someone.
Used to have one, didn't we, garbage company? So didn't we have, we had one on the garbage company?
Thirty two years.
Thirty two now?
Um government relations, so this is our relations contract, um inter lobbying efforts, uh that's thirty six thousand dollars a year. Uh just some options, we certainly could have a discussion, Troy and I have a have a meeting scheduled to discuss that more. Uh see if we can negotiate a different contract, most likely, what that would mean if it's a reduced fee, we take on more of the workload, whether it's filling out the capital requests, and some more lobbying efforts. Um one thing Terry brought up the other day, much of our requests. Um and the funding that's coming, requests and subsequent funding has been for utility projects, and we're not currently going. Um just work out of the utilities, so that's something the utilities could potentially absorb and and help relieve some of the um burden on on the general fund, uh so. Um I think, I think Troy was at before this last session, about eleven million dollars have been able to. Obtained through through those efforts, I think that uh relationship with our delegation is really important at the time and after. Over there on the Capitol campus throughout the session, uh helps us out, obviously, um it's not just our delegation.
You know, it takes more than three guys to get this money, so, and he he works, he works floor, so, I I think it's, I think it's a. Eleven million dollars, you just said that, and how many years is that?
Uh it's, um I think it's seventeen, my events first contract, somewhere between eighteen and seventeen.
That's before the, that's before the sewer coalition and all those millions of dollars for for basin three, basin three was before seventeen, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, but he came on after that.
Yeah, but I'm saying that, that's eleven million plus.
Oh, yes.
Before, you know, I mean, it's just huge, it's a huge.
Five hundred thousand dollars, this last session, the water tank design, um. Five hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to put on our rate papers.
I I think he does an excellent job, I think that our delegation also, I'd say we have a great delegation also that gives us um the funds, but I think that he, it's not just them, he has to work. You know, another fifty senators or two hundred, you know, legislators to also give us some of that money, so. I think that having the lobbyists is is definitely a. Important. So.
I think it's an investment in capital projects, I think cutting this is not a good idea, but if we can move into another fund, that would be awesome.
I already thought it was in the utility funds, so I'm sorry. I just figured it already was because of the benefit, he's done, I mean, he's done a great job. But then also, I've tried to staff up, it's hard to get professionals in here who run projects and all that, you know, professional engineers, um. But so I love Troy, but I hate him in a way, because it keeps us here late at night and that sort of thing, but. Goodness gracious, he he's making a big difference, that uh this, the firm maintenance. These projects that he's helping us pay for, um the deferral of maintenance costs, and a lot of that was the rate structure in the two thousand ten, two thousand fifteens. On the utility funds weren't, they were just doing operations and maintenance, they weren't doing a lot of cafeteria projects, replacements and things, they had a lot of old water tanks, a lot of old water meters, that sort of thing. So he's done a great job for us, he really has.
Let's not forget that our sewer driven plant is fourteen years old, and it's still old, probably thirty million dollars on it, and it's gonna need some upgrades. Next few years, we need a five million dollar water storage tank to keep our city growing without, you know, so, we we definitely need somebody out there. Working on our behalf to get some of these signs from legislature. You know, so I I, yeah, water tanks are mine, so let's get to that.
Right.
Go on.
Pre-design is starting and then full design, I think, should be.
We need to have a letter uh from.
From commerce.
From commerce, we have that new ready job.
Only five million bucks, so.
You'll see us, yeah, we need that design, so we we've got the engineer's estimate, shooting costs, and then we can start talking about, yeah, have fun then.
And then we'll talk about city property, water property, to sell, to help pay for that, that water tank, so. We know we have some water property that's pretty valuable.
Right, Jay, oh, I think it's matched with. AC DC, um so that's a a five thousand dollar um direct. Uh contribution to the development council, basin county, um and then there's uh staff time, we participate in there, um I'm on their board and. Um we go to the administrator office where we, the other staff, so there's there's indirect costs, um. Of participating in the organization, knowing some of their events, sponsoring things and whatnot, but the the direct financials, five thousand dollars, it's nineteen, it's, it's part of their. Forty dollar budget to go, so.
Big economic development is extremely important, it's gonna be our way out of what we're doing tonight, so. We need somebody on our behalf also out there looking for Costos and Homeview Pros and, you know, whoever, sorry.
Hotel?
Hotels, absolutely, we, we've heard that, like, I love a hotel, we need a hotel, um distinct with the fellow, where the old disc golf guys stayed, those thousand people, where'd they stay?
A lot of camp, because they, the the disc golfers themselves, the pros, they travel and dance and campers and stuff, but yeah, there's a lot of other people that travel with them and come to watch.
A lot of them would love a nice camp, I.
Yeah, we have like thirty rooms here in town, no, we got, well, we have. About seventy five of them here now. But, yeah, forgot where I was, oh, yes, I I think it's probably important because, you know, I know that they're sending out, they just sent out letters, the, a hundred feet letters. Looking, you know, recruiting letters, not recruiting. Bring what it.
Essentially.
Cause it's.
Site selection.
Yes, heard. So people that come look at our city, so.
Yeah, I think EDC is an investment.
Yeah, I mean, our 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 way out of, like I said, meetings like this today, it's gonna be growth, we know the houses are coming, knock on wood, I know that I can see. Four miles behind my house now, where I couldn't see forty feet there six weeks ago. So we know the houses are in the works, so hopefully, when we start getting houses built, we start getting people looking at us for some bigger stuff, so. We need, we need sales tax, that is, sales tax is our way out, but. The theme of the night, not this one. But. Not this one.
You think this year? Probably gonna need a motion to have.
So we've got, oh, I don't know, about three more to get into the cirrows, um some of these did have red dots, we get down to twenty to get on the inside. Ten, ten more basically, um.
How about thirty minutes, can we get a motion to extend thirty minutes?
I moved to extend the meeting for thirty minutes.
Second, motion second to extend the meeting for thirty minutes. So, anybody else on EDC? I think we've got two here. Your comment? EDC.
I think they're spending too much time worrying about the northern part of the county and not enough about us, so. I don't mind a cut there.
There are real streets sweeping. Jay Harris?
Yeah, so uh the city has uh two street sweepers and um we usually do the local streets uh every other month. Downtown, every week, every two weeks, we spend all the time of the year and all that, downtown gets a lot more, um then also our charity and collector votes and get more sweeping. Um so what's happening though, uh that with our new stormwater permit, we're actually required to have street sweeping program. When we're under uh the ten thousand people, uh we didn't, we weren't required, we're still doing it, we weren't required. So when we got an increment, uh this was uh two, three years ago, is when we started transferring the stormwater fund, this has been going on for a second long, it started when I. Then increased then, I think we increased it a few years, the budget amount, yeah, so uh anyways, the stormwater fund transfers about a hundred and five thousand. The street sweeping cost is about fifty one thousand a year, so a another fund is funding sweeping cost plus more, so uh. The reason why the transfer's higher than the actual cost is because of roadside ditches and mowing and stormwater along the sides of the street. That the uh street crews doing that for the the stormwater fund also.
What I'm hearing is.
It's it's an on, it, I feel it's an on issue. Sounds good to me, I can't eliminate street sweeping, I'm required to do it via a stormwater, that is required.
And we have some dedicated bench ops that have expense.
Awesome.
Less. Less impact on just.
Alright.
Business licensing.
So this was in two places on the, one was in CED, one was in finance, the reason. We have it listed in CED, it's it's a function, um that we have point one F, we're point one five F. That our our permanent tag uses to do business licensing. But it's actually comes out of the management budget for that, so it's a bit different, but. Um yeah, so the the question was, you know, do we, does that function, it it was was marked with a dot, so, you know, it's, is that what are the? You know, alternatives, does it get into about the finding, um do we eliminate the fire needs, ever online? Most of it's on online right now, um but it's gonna be still less finished over the process, and I think that's where that needs to be, so.
That part is basically to give all the information to the building inspector and the fire department for when they open the spot, so that's why it's. That part, we have initial part where we we get the license from. The primary licensing, and then we forward it on to um community development, and then they can go there, and they tell us whether, yes, we go ahead and improve it. And we will, and then the state issues the license.
Is this something we got for business? County's like two fifty, they call it a change of tenant, not a business license.
Well, we have a, we have a change of lease.
No, no, the county's, their business license is a change of tenant, that's what they call it.
We do have a change of use, change of time application, that's different than a business license, so, um and that depends on the scope of scale of what it would be, you know.
No, I meant when I took over a gas station, I I paid a change of tenant.
And you would pay that with that sort of second, change, use, change of tenant.
No, it wasn't change use.
It's same thing, same thing, change use, change of tenant, change, change of owner, see, that is the same application, that's, that's more of a building and fire.
Oh, okay.
Like life safety essentially is uh issue that we do that inspection based on the application of business license.
Must have changed that, if you speak fifty bucks for all of it. Here in town.
Uh it's minimum permit fee for the change in use standard on the right. Underbody, it's, yeah, ninety seven, fifty.
Okay.
And so one, one of the, one of the rupture that I had back in community development is, the state requires business license to be applied for through. Um DOR, right? And we can't provide any additional information, so as a business owner, you apply through DOR, state business license, click the city of Shelton as another endorsement. We can't provide any information like a change of tenant or any other information on that, let's say, so it has to come through us, we then reach back out to, you know, it comes through. Finance goes back to um through our permitting process, we reach out to the owner and say, okay, you are a brick and mortar, right? Are you doing any improvements, you know, ask those questions, and we go through the inspection process, or maybe apply for bill implement, so, it's a little clunky, but. There's not a great way to list, I think you can develop your own, right, platform like W, some of the cities over.
Yeah, the bigger cities.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, had to go to every department, though, so.
It's still under review, much like a, much like a. A permit, it's but, you know, but some days. Applying for a construction permit, since we're ten.
The street, street business license, you can leave here, but they could change, um maybe for trigger, traffic impact fees, trigger. Fire sprinklers, like it just depends on what was in there before, what are they trying to put in there, so there there is.
It's just a service provider, you know, you have a HVAC company coming in and installing an HVAC unit, business licensing, great, people on.
Half the dollar amount on here for that.
Yeah, um.
But it's, it's hard to quantify, um I mean, it's, what it, what it might be. I can't imagine, but uh but we extrapolated back out to her.
What's the other option? Yeah, there are often, there are often.
Again, it's a fairness uh issue throughout the city, if we're not applying business license permitting, you know, licensing uniformly. Um the businesses operate without business license, right, and they're not, we're not tracking, meaning no tax collection, but as well, I mean, not beginning, it's basically like safety issues. Really an equity issue, um by managing that, and they just talk about it, we don't, we don't change.
Yeah, that's why I meant, there's no other option, we need to keep that way.
And 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 there's, there's additional costs beyond just the point one five fifty as well, so it's kind of like really what. What we would do and it would make a difference on the savings or cost, because the fact you're in it, the fire marshals renew, building official. And vastly, it seems, things, but we also don't want to have, you know, upfront loaded, super hefty business costs that keeps the way.
Correct, absolutely. But we, didn't we, the fire department have seen now, didn't we do that a couple years ago?
Fire is a regular inspection.
Yeah, we just did that, yeah.
Yeah, um it's been a few years now, we, you can come back when you knew that.
Everything's just a meeting, so.
Because, you know, there's, be applied to, be applied to the the business or, you know, the use. And then that is is built through the city, through our permitting process, uh and then central Mesa Fire builds the safe that I use, so we've got. A workload to be able to collect those fees, and sometimes we have to pay timely, we have to do a number of invoice processes, maybe there's a collection. Uh collection process that might be appropriate there, or we were previously paying flat fee for that service to secondary fire. And um it was a lot of this um. Administrative. Labor intensive. Some of that could be relieved with annexation. So that's something that. What Mayor's brought up tonight, these reports, other things, that's another switching to.
And then that's, and that's interesting on both sides, fire department and and city, we're both interested in something like that, I could save some money.
Yes, it's, it's the appropriate. Method, right, the, the city doesn't assume you need to be in the middle and that emergency service, and they're providing, providing that service well. Um they've increased that service throughout their district and they introduced one sense that, you know, they are the, they are the taxing board. Oh, back to courts again, that's kind of theme of courts, um. They provided a budget to determine what best use of those, those funds are. Um and how, how they can meet their statutory requirements with that, with that, you know, resources. So we'll provide some, some comments and. Um suggestions, that's a good process. With the judge and administrator.
So. There's not really like a lot of direct costs associated with the district, it's mostly used. Um really, you know, it's a. Quite a expensive, you know, a hundred dollars a year, my clients. Up in the district established, so you know, the. Going to give the conference, uh the session Friday, to not know all the districts getting together. Sharing their projects, their funding sources, and how they. Make magic for mud, and it's a, it's an interesting community to be part of, um. A. Rule of that from, from my body of work, um maybe to either just get rid of it entirely, which. Um it's not costing us really a lot, um and for what we're, what we're seeing back already, the work from the arts community, the, I think even just. The exponential growth event from last year, this year is, is a really impressive. It could go to um to vars party, for example, having arts admission. You put there instead, um but. Scott thought, so.
Uh and again, you said sales tax increases with all this, I mean, I think that would be said. So there's more sales tax coming in the city, we have events like that, and it costs much, I mean, it's a good idea to. For the parks side.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, arts issues are funded through the S and P.
It's not.
It's not, it's funded, arts is funded out of the job, it's, it lives within arts and recreation, but it's, it's funded through the job.
Will you gavel me if I say LTAC?
No, he's the one who started it.
So is there, is that exactly what the park department?
Um other than. Jay's familiar and has been the catalyst for that, I think.
But it's the same, right, the dollars should be same.
Essentially, yeah, you're spending staff time.
I think it's a net positive for the whole city, and it's part of the city pride. And it's part of uh who we are, or who we're, who we want to be.
As well as the downtown engine.
Yes.
You know, it's um really focused on an arts district and. You know, more arts engagement, activating some of the spaces that are activated downtown, so maybe we was.
And it's also part of the, part of being human and taking away some of the technology. And the technology zombies that we're. Seeing a lot now, so if we can get people back to the arts and be knowing what it is to be human, then that's what the arts district should be about.
George.
I liked it, art walking, I thought it was great, my kids all went down there, lots of my friends' kids went down there and celebrated, had a good time. So I think it's a great event, I think it's a good thing, um. Think we should figure it out.
Yep.
I, I think it's great, I think it's part of our, our civic identity, and uh if I'm not mistaken, there are grant opportunities. If we're actually identified as a creative district, so. It can make our downtown area even better and can pull this off, so I think we should keep pursuing it.
Melissa? Anything to add? Melissa? Right, can you leave a comment on this one? Alright, moving on.
Um information is now. So, as you know, we've got one F T E within I T and then we contract for services, so um. Oh, but, so that's, that's a couple parts, the, the, the contract service um carries. Um lot of contracts for the, for the providers that we have, whether it's the licensing, I guess, for all the network systems that we have. Um they also provide twenty four seven support, and that's important, we operate twenty four um hours a day. We have SCADA systems and uh connectivity issues at our, at our treatment plants and our water facilities at the same time. Um we're engaging right systems with the, the provider in that and see how potentially get. Um uh cost savings there, it's, it's fairly expensive, but we talked about twenty four seven, three sixty five. Year's energy betting um for what would be staffed, that you bring in house to provide that service, um and. We are outstanding, so frankly, if our. Our information technology systems and our platform will start.
Or secure.
Or secure, yeah, great point, so, as well as security, and, and frankly. Being able to, you may say, you know, four hundred seventeen thousand dollars. And you know, you can hire three people, for that's obvious benefits, you're still not going to get the three people, the expertise. That right systems can buy across all the backgrounds, especially a small entity like this, they're just, they're just not out there, so. It's, there, there's a lot of value there, but I mean, hopefully we can negotiate something that finds more of the savings, but doesn't impact. Particularly those twenty four seven services and if uh.
Are these companies responsible for security breaches? When we have companies like this, the third parties?
We have some now, um insurance for, for that type of thing. They do, they do regular audits, right?
Yeah.
Push out updates for us, and so they're, they're kind of, you know, they're out there on the cutting edge, knowing what's happening. Um in the industry, more with municipalities and governmental entities, um. Towns, primarily, uh government entities, yeah. So they are, they're out there and they're known, it's, it's more than just, you know, one person that's going around making sure. The printers of somebody's computer, um you know, which is a lot of work for somebody. Putting his head up all the time. Sorry, replacement schedule as well, yes. Great point, yes, yeah, we, we um, we bought a lot of laptops um during COVID. And those things are now starting to age out, so we've got some replacement schedules, far as starting. In the old stuff. Uh P E's not out.
No, I'm sorry, that communication is everything, if you don't have communication, all help will literally break, we'll have that helping. So obviously, communication these days is all about, so it's obviously it's like. Right up there, safety is all of it, I mean, the SCADA, that's a big word right there, right? So. Um obviously, if, you know. If they wanted to offer us discount, great, but you can't.
They never offered discounts.
Right.
If SCADA wasn't working, we'd have an employee at the plant twenty four hours a day. Or more than one, maybe.
More than one, yeah, because we have to monitor that.
One, one thing about right systems is uh server maintenance, you know, they have. Other technical people that know servers very well, and write that, you know, code is good. But these people have certified, you know, technicians to work on servers, that's our backups, that's the sort of thing. So we do have a data loss, it can be recovered. The other thing important about crisis is Citrix, so we have an online desktop capability, so the laptops are going away. And we have a uh, a, a box, it just gets you online, it runs keyboard, mouse monitors. But the desktops are going online, on, on the cloud, and uh right systems, again. Knows they install software into Citrix and do that sort of thing, so uh and then code will go and do the thin client work. So uh we get a lot of value from that, because over time, we might not need as many uh laptop replacements. Because of this newer system.
We're gonna need some more um stuff down when Macecom makes, right? With all that down there, we'll be needing some more.
No, we don't share, we don't share servers. No, we share room or Sunday equipment, but not, not hardware. Yes, yeah, good point, yeah, also, all the cell phone technology are under landlines that are desk, which are. I mean, we'd be close to be original to the building, close to twenty years old, we really don't need those anymore. Um you know, it's technologies out there where we do everything, putting phone calls here, so.
Landline in five years. So Melissa, do you have anything on this?
It doesn't want to unmute, um no, I don't, I don't have anything else, thank you.
You. Alright, anybody else have anything on this? Nicely connected. Spot.
Alright, swat. Uh one of them will buy agency swat team, that consists of based counting us and swat nine police. Basin County is going to be the anchor agency, they provide most of the personnel and the equipment and empty cars and all that stuff. We generally just. Uh their weapons, they did, and they're the short swat and the training. Um for, you probably remember, I did budget request for a new swat server in the end of last year, so that's what's. Forty thousand. Line there, and that's include, you know, all of the technical components, quite expensive, it makes a full year. You know, a vest, you know, basically it's pants, it's, you know, what television, it's a body helmet. Um and then includes uh upgraded weapons for the swat people, they want to use that maybe. So, but generally, on a, on a yearly basis. What we're paying for is, I think we, well, right now we have two officers, so it's about one of them on the team, so it's five hundred dollars a piece. For their uniform, everyone, just to keep them. If they're equipped and fresh and ready with expression back. The real bulk of where the money goes for swat is man hours dedicated, uh for those officers, uh generally it's. One uh, one training day per month for the swat operators, I wish something about gave them. Um we also have. Also, we have that's a sniper as well, so that's a special team positions that clients basically develop, train, so one has one training day, one has two training days for their special team. So we're looking at somewhere, when you hear about three hundred hours of training. She had, I don't talk missions or any other um issues that are going, their situations are going to, you know, I mean, that's not very long to. Figure out sometimes something, I should say, we don't do, you know, the hours spent on that, but. To be part of that team, so. Uh that's the. So.
So you have those all the time, chief?
Sometimes, yes, and it all comes in, they're all, maybe well, SWAT come, call comes out there, you know, with my, and it's overtime because. They're, they're responding from their home, and they are on duty, we have enough guys to cover them, he just goes and does that instead. About half a left guy is on duty while he's responding, and we call someone in to cover that position, so he can respond to. To shoot, so if there's lots of variables that could affect. The, the county SWAT team, they were still coming, all of us, and we, there's some issues we had in the city, we. I'm thinking about this, I don't even know if we were there in Iowa with SWAT team, um if there is one, it's so ancient, I've never seen it. Um but there's nothing that I'm aware of that says I'm.
We definitely saw the support with the SWAT at the high school, we saw people from all over the. The thirty miles that showed up, but uh I think having our own train. Snipers and stuff like that, for something like that, this close, it's probably beneficial to build to the city, I would shoot, wouldn't want. To have to wait for somebody to drive twenty, thirty miles to protect our kids or kind of active shooter.
And that's, and you know, patrol's going to get there for SWAT team, anyways, in a, in a, in a bed like that, you know. It's going to be a trouble cluster, that's just circling, circling around the city, it's going to be on that shoot, it takes, it takes hours to get a SWAT team going, so. In other ways, that, that would probably have the cause if it came to a stagnant. Um situation where we barricaded, or you know, there's certain situations where that could be activated, but it just depends on the. But it is, it is helpful to have officers on the SWAT team, yeah, as a liaison, you know, with the, with the church department, so when. We are all willing to show the city. Or get better with that, and also, it, it just makes it better officer, you know, in the long run, they, they become more confident, they. They will, you know, these advanced situations very well, so it, it is.
And they would go to like Olympia requested, or Brimington, if they were requested, if there was such a big incident.
Last year, we, they supported uh, it's at county, um with a little more than Brimington, so yeah, we support other agencies that they support. Absolutely.
I do have a comment, I'm the one person who uh put the red dot there, and um. You know, I had two green dots that I put on for foot patrol, increased foot patrol, and also for their accreditation training. So um but if we had to cut something, this is what I would cut, because there is no impact to the community. Because there still is a SWAT team, it's just that we're not part of it. Um and I do want to draw back to my experience with the Schultz incentive, can't imagine task force. Is that the police need to be more than just snipers, we need to demilitarize what the police do, it'd be more community policing effort. Than a, than a military, that's my point of view. It's only fourteen thousand dollars, so it's not. It's not a huge cut, but if we had to make a cut, that's where I would cut, is the.
That's one time thing, just to get an officer out of running on, or it's, it's cheaper than that.
Yeah. I understand, understood, but like I said, I had X amount of red dots to put out. And I put two green dots in other areas for the police department. And we, it decreased everything on the budget except for police services. Um and that actually grew two percent, right, so um I think the. Council's commitment to public safety is not a question, but if we had to cut something, a specialized unit like that, one person doing it. Is where I would cut.
Oh, we got five minutes.
Alright, motion second, extend the meeting another thirty minutes, uh all in favor of that? Alright. Form. There. Alright. So now comments, questions?
Thank you, number one priority for, for our. So. I think the more prepared, the more.
Pretty calm.
You know, it sounds like we talked about point three five F T E between two active officers, um we already talked about the benefit of. An S R O and then giving officers the opportunity to do other things, it's hard to get officers here as it, well, not here necessarily, but anywhere. Everywhere, everywhere, if you look at jobs, there's always a police officer opening. Um so, eliminating options doesn't seem like a great way to keep, keep everybody. Keep our patrols going, let alone have a SWAT team that's ready to go, so it's, it's hard to want to cut. Stuff like this.
George.
I completely support the SWAT team, I think uh. Growth and training for our officers is always a wonderful thing, I'm gonna support that a hundred percent all the time. Uh I love the SWAT program, our SWAT officer is a great guy, uh I saw him in his uniform, he looks good. Uh, I love the SWAT program. Our SWAT officer is a great guy. Uh, I saw him in his uniform, he looks good. Uh, my hope I never got to see him from the other side, he was uh in the parade, but uh, I tell you what, they do a great job. I love what they do. Keep up the good work.
Right, Melissa.
Um, uh, what George just said, absolutely.
Alright. Okay, moving on.
I got the next one too, online recording. This is still the worst, the ours, I'm trying to get this up and running, that we gained was a budget request starting last year, uh, three thousand dollars to get this thing up and running. And I anticipate this. Get there until. Maybe the end of the year, if you're lucky, we're a little bit late on that, so we actually haven't spent a lot on the edge. Contracts. Um, thereafter, it's nine thousand dollars a year to keep the program in place. Yeah, you know, we're hopeful that it will be useful to the community and give them other opportunities to reach out to us and report. Issues that they are concerned with us. That's the position, so we don't, we don't know if it's all, you know, the sheriff's department has theirs in place and it's. But it's going slow so far, so dispatches, we're seeing a lot of calls where they. Are referring people to the already recording system for the sheriff's department and some of the um, the community members are. They went, I want, oh, speak to an officer first and they're, I don't, that question, so that's, that's the issues that I'm. Going, going to the point, shares about this, some people just. They can put that person on. Us, people see, I mean, you know. How it's gonna work out for us yet, and maybe what sheriff's department has, I don't know, you know, what we miss of it is. Increases our little, it's more opportunities now for the public to, you know, book lines or reverse the.
It's already, already a budgeted twenty-five item, so we had it for a year and we didn't like it, we can talk about this next year. So.
I'm excited to find. I'm excited to see it up and going, I'm curious to see how this goes. I'm I'm hoping it's amazing. I hope it's good. You know, we're wasting our time.
Yeah, yeah, and then there'll be a dedicated supervisor that, you know, oversees and and triages whatever comes in, so they can figure out where.
The work, you know, so we'll know, and so, um, as long as we're not looking at tender contract or something, right? Okay.
Yeah, let's try.
You know, they can take some of our costs off of other. It costs money when people call a non-emergency line, so if we can get people to go here and we're paying a flat rate, that's, that is costing.
And if they go up more.
Yeah.
And now it's about seventeen dollars per call, it's not like emergency, I have one caller, not emergency. Based on, based on, oh, like previous years, probably, and total cost.
I support anything that's gonna help our officers get the information they need. It's also helpful to our community. I like it. I think it's a win-win.
Alright, moving on. Civic Center, Melissa?
No, I, I, no, I, I agree with um George on that as well, yeah, and and I think it's too, I mean. We don't really know yet. I think we need to um, yeah, maybe come back to it and see how it goes for a while.
Okay, thank you, moving on now.
I'll touch base on Civic Center, so we rent, you know, the media room, the bank room, media room space out, out here. Um, this year is just over twenty-six, just about twenty-six and a half thousand dollars. Um, year to date, seventeen seven expanded. Um, the fiscal impact, you'll see it at sixty-four hundred because we are, we're generating. Um, we're, we're somewhere around. Twenty thousand dollar revenue manually, it changes from year to year, just depending on what kind of uses. Um, it's decreased over the last few years, last several years, obviously. But also we eliminated alcohol service here, it decreased our revenue, but highly increased our cost there. Um, and we're in turn our building, uh, we have part-time staff that staff events after hours. Um, but a lot of the events are, or, you know, during, during business hours are managed by, by staff that appear during the day. See during, during, well, it's taken, it's done a terrific job. Um, so, you know, if this was eliminated, obviously it's a big, you know, it decreases some more. Some, some workload from staff in Civic Center, it's not enough for a whole FTE um, reduction, right, those are, you know. Combined between part-time staff, full-time staff, so basically it would shift, shift some of the cost of harvest. Um, but then again, it reduces the ability for uh the public utilizing facility. Um, there's a lot of internal support as well, so if one needs an apartment sitting in front of you, needs, needs the room that is often set up by, by the staff and managed by the staff. You know, by custodial staff too, so um, you might have achieved down there set up table and chairs for this next Saturday downstairs, uh, if we do that, so.
That definitely should be cost recovery for, for the function to use it. This isn't affordable. This is our city hall, it's a portable rental space for a wedding or funeral or, or karate or Pilates and yoga, uh, you, you can't go to the. The one up there up by the park, you know, from what I called them, uh, pavilion, it's like eighteen hundred bucks for, you know, or, you know, we're like three hundred bucks, so. I mean, I think it's a, I mean, if you need cost recovery, let's look at that, but I don't, should. Take away the rent from here, I think it's, it's a benefit to our citizens that. I mean. A, a nice wedding venue or funeral or, like I said, uh, some of the other stuff we do, there's yoga and. Karate for the kids.
So it also, I'll, I'll clarify that, those are recreation programs, so those are, those are managed by parks and recreation, so you see the classes and the yoga classes and things like that, so those are managed by the parks and apartments, not necessarily the rental. So reutilizing it as a kind of our rent center, so some of the, some of the revenue that comes in, um. To administer the programs after you pay it, or you supply it, or instruct your services, helps offset, offset the cost there too.
Yeah, I think we should look at the masterpiece schedule and look at cost recovery.
I'm looking at notes that said market the state board to please find a.
Yeah, that certainly is an option.
There isn't not a lot of places, big halls like that to rent around here, you know, a lot of people call me up and like, hey, how many people can you fit in your restaurant? Not that many, so you know, they need a place like this and it comes up all the time.
People don't know it's available, they're not familiar.
Yeah, definitely.
But on that, that's only helpful if we promote it if we're running it at a cost recovery level. Which we should, I mean, I didn't know this was available until I saw it on this list and it's awesome, so.
One. Anyone selling points for community specific.
Still didn't pay off, but two years ago, get a. Two years, two years now already. So, and it needs, it needs a roof here coming up, about.
You know, I mean, it's got a twenty-five or more year old roof on it, so we need to find a, the prospect of. Especially flat roofs in, in Western Washington.
You're putting away. Alright, moving on.
Over in the streets here, there's a couple. Items Jade, I mean, close us out, all of what we've referred. Commonly referred to as the ramp out.
You got it, so sidewalk maintenance, uh, so pretty six thousand dollar budget, uh, we go in and uh grind. We do a lot of root grinding, lifted sections, that sort of thing. Uh, we also will place a few panels here and there. Um, at, at times we have a, a AD ramp we have to go do um as part of sidewalk maintenance. Um, so we have the AD transition plan, uh, we were required to. To do that, if we're gonna receive any money from law start, we have to have an AD transition plan. Uh, we're in the finale of it, and you folks will be seeing it in the coming months, from a great study session, uh, we have like forty million dollar um sidewalk. Uh, deficiency of lifted sidewalks, AD ramps missing, uh, that driveway approaches. Uh, you know, to make everything accessible, safe, tricky hazards, uh, the guy wire blocking, telephone poles too close, we can't get around with the wheelchair.
You say forty or four?
Forty million.
I was gonna say, thanks.
It's forty million, um, and I, I anyways, I commented on their cost assessment on Oklahoma, it's just gonna go down, but uh, anyways, that's coming to you, but uh. This is a small piece of. That of improving sidewalks and, and the mobility of our city other than automobiles uh in the future. Uh, so the problem we have, like downtown, we have the downtown sidewalk replacement project coming up. Um, we're beginning to get it up in here in the, in the coming month. And uh, anyways, that project, because of the street trees planted twenty plus years ago, it's pushed out a bunch of panels too much. Will be usually went and grinding a few times, but at a certain point, we use no sidewalk left, you have to stop grinding, you gotta fix the root problem or whatever was pushing that. Kind of replace the panel, so uh, this fund allows us to go do those type of activities. Um, without any sidewalk money, means we'll probably not be doing, maybe do the worst of the worst. Uh, painting them, so you go through some panels where you just see spray paint, orange spray paint. Says, yeah, even down through Olympia right now, there's a lot of them, um, and that's the best hits, right? And uh, so typically the population, the trips falls or older, being more yonder people. And uh, so then we have an increasing claims here and uh, uh, through WCIA that uh, we process uh, uh, tricky claims. Uh, seems like I get two, two a year, three a year, those will probably be going up in the future without any sidewalk money.
Uh, it's mostly downtown, right? But most of the problems is like the, it's a sidewalk, it's mostly down here.
There's problems all over the whole city. Downtown is where we focus the most because that's the highest level of pedestrian traffic. And when I bring the plan to you, um, you shocked of how many areas, they went and worked in every piece of sidewalk, every driveway, every. AD ramp that city rated it, and they have a great program, um, it's costly though, every year to get out of it. Thirty years, it was like a hundred and eighty thousand a year or something. And uh, you know, that's a lot more than thirty thousand dollars, but the state's requiring that we have a transition plan and we intend to fund it. So this is a piece of that.
They require that. So, how do we get the state help to pay for that?
Yeah, I, I mean, so there are uh, a grant opportunities for this type of thing, um, that we haven't pursued them, we've been very focused on payment systems. Uh, getting grant dollars for roundabouts, uh, you know, Olympic Highway North. Uh, all sorts of other projects, uh, they were, revenue track grants, you know, take them out, that sort of thing. So we've been focused on the transportation system, the automobile, you know, truck transportation system. And not super focused on the pedestrian system, to be honest with you. We could, we have Staffordville a little bit. But right now, we actually, we don't today. But we will in the future, once some of these projects start wrapping up. You're seeing a whole mode come your way, so.
That's when we go back and talk to, telling it.
Potentially, absolutely, they, they can be part of the, the general. Lobbying or, or additional funding for pedestrian.
There's also a policy discussion I, I need to talk to you about, and we'll talk to you about the, at the transition by meeting, but the gist of it is, is an individual code. The responsibility of the sidewalk maintenance is on the property owner. It was written in there a long time ago. The liability though is to the property owner and both the property owner and the city. We're the deeper pocket, right? And so uh, anyways, with that though, um, uh. In, in my last job, uh, we set up a fund for a sidewalk replacement program for the property owner, paid part and unpaid part. And uh, that they went out, got three bids, once we were done, we reimbursed, we have a whole policy that was set up. So we split the cost of that with them, um, that was some years ago, um, it's something considered. Uh, right now, the code says they're fully responsible, so if it's a non-street tree, like it's your yard tree that's pushed up the sidewalk. And it's not repairable, we, or not grindable, we typically are requested that they fix that. So uh, anyways, and then it was, we'd be a grant program, so once the funds, let's say it was a hundred thousand dollars a year, you effectively get. Two hundred thousand dollars when the project's done, and if you split it, if you put them, that's how we approach the problem at another agency, so there's some other options available. And grant funds down the road.
Any questions? But I get a pretty direction there, um. Eighteen thousand dollars, is that where we are? Eleven?
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-five. Yeah, we need to. Address creepy hazards.
So before the forest festival, we walked every street downtown and made sure we were looking at, and went brown, someone.
And them too.
Yeah, I thought it were.
Yeah, and we painted them if we couldn't get to them, and but we will get to those.
That's actually why. Safe mitigation, go paint them. Used to be, you know. Identify them. Committing some life. Now it's different.
Alright, so, I guess, moving on.
Winter Ops.
Yeah, so winter operations, uh, this varies year by year. We have a budget of eighteen thousand seven hundred. Um, last winter, we really didn't have, I was actually in Mexico and then that happened, but it was a couple days maybe, wasn't that big of a deal? Um, so uh, we didn't spend that budget last year. Um, anyways, uh, but ongoing, uh, that was like four years ago, it was like my first winter here. And uh, the city manager gets a phone call from the street guy at four or five in the morning, and we're gonna. Close city hall, civic center, and that was happening for weeks on end, some years ago, and we probably overexpent, expended one year. Um, it was pretty messy, so uh, this is one of those items that um, if you don't do anything. Um, it's, you have routes like in the hospital that needs to remain open, so um. We have our priority round map, that's what we do first, and then we try to get to other streets later. Um, so if you don't do anything, you have an issue with emergency services, um, you know, it can be fire police. Um, a person trying to get to the hospital, uh, that sort of thing, so um. Anyways, uh, it's an important part of what we do, um, and the guys actually do a great job here. Um, the last agency I worked for, it was lacking compared to what they do here. Um, and I'm really proud of the equipment that we have and, and how they go about it and how safe they make this community for the people. We do have some hills, right? Uh, they go close some of those roads, uh, they do some primary routes. Um, and a lot of that's for first responders for medical incident, that sort of thing, they gotta get into these areas. If you have twelve inches of snow on the road, you know, the plows already gone by a few times, if there's twelve inches out. So it's an important program uh for, for safety for everybody.
Well, I mean, we need safe routes, and we need to be able to get families to hospitals, people not sliding down hills, so we need to keep it.
Why would we care about it if we didn't, right?
Well, we already hear about it because we don't do the, we don't do sidewalks anyway in neighborhoods, so I hear that every year too, in, in my own neighborhood. So, so.
Double clear driveways.
Yeah.
Now, remember which pile we go through and pile, we block driveways, right? That snow's going off the side and we're continuing it on, so unfortunately you have to shovel your driveway out sometimes.
And they're done now.
Yeah, okay.
Four o'clock and one. Alright.
That gets through the bulk of that, that's, and I appreciate the elders' patience, appreciate the, uh, agency. We're, we're close to the home here. It's not a lot, so um, we've got some work to do for you, um, we're gonna continue. Working down, let's, let's look at finding alternatives um based on the information. Um, based on the information you provided to us as well as continuing, creating the, um. Right now, we just have a study session scheduled in August to kind of finish up. This discussion with what we formulate, um. Our, our draft budget moving forward into the adoption, um, by, by being here, so. As we get through the next, you know, month or so. I'll continue to communicate with you and, and greetings and that in front of you. In August with, um, most likely some difficult decisions as we look forward. I, my goal is we'll have more information on year-to-date expenditures, year-to-date revenue, right? We can reconcile those a little better, especially given six months of this year, we'll fully understand what. What we believe will be the inflight balance implication this year, what we use. Um, and I bring to you a recommendation of what, what that looks like next year in twenty-seven. Um, I don't think we can make that full reduction, you know, next, next year frankly, and eliminate any inflight balance use. Um, I think we have to do that over, over time, over a couple of years, so most likely my recommendation is gonna be that we. Continue using some inflight balance use, um, inflight balance to balance the general fund budget twenty-six. Combine some reductions to, to get us through twenty-seven, you know, maybe twenty-eight and.
Did the things go the way they're supposed to for the rest of the year? We should have about one point nine. Um, res- under reserve funds. But, yeah, and also we did, I mean, maybe it's not the play to talk about reducing our reserves to sixty percent. It used to be, we actually raised twenty percent, the first council did that. Be safe, but that would actually get us a few hundred thousand dollars savings there.
Well, you're, you're losing some investment revenue, so. It's not direct, you know, it's not apples and oranges, you, you, you're losing some of that, you, you lose that forever, right? As well as, um, we need to look at what our fund balances needed just to keep, just to pay the bills and keep operations. So particularly outside of, you know, the property tax of April and October, right? They monstered May and, and November, I guess, we get, uh, property tax. Yeah, yeah, so we need to look in, in between that, that period of time, make sure we have enough in the bank, keep paying our bills.
How about works rights, we made checks for reverse later by grants too, and that always made by. That we're writing big checks and it takes a while to get that money back in again.
Yeah, so that would be part of the discussion.
Yeah, it just says, I see things.
Yeah, but certainly that's part of the discussion, you need more information prior to, right? What is the reduction in that, in that statutory balance look like? What's the impact? Do we need to do it now? Do you consider it later? Um, do you do it temporarily and then? Bring it back later, you know, I mean, those are all options we need to bring forward and discuss it.
I remember you certainly right, SAP wasn't too excited about going to twenty percent. No, the one to twenty, that's when we did it. If, I remember asking, asking that question and then being told, well, why would we do that for? But I, 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 that's what I remember.
Yeah.
That they weren't excited to jump that twenty percent, so going back down to sixteen is that.
I mean, provides some flexibility, right, for us, um.
Maybe not this year, but twenty-seven definitely, you know, for looking forward, looking for a little bit extra.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's part of this purpose projection, not just looking at twenty-six. Start putting looking at twenty-seven and twenty-eight at the same time, so we can project forward and not make decisions just based on next year. Any surprises or not be prepared to like, what twenty-seven or twenty-eight friends?
We definitely know things aren't getting any cheaper costly going up. Um, when I started on the council, I think our, our liability interest was like. Three hundred and twenty thousand dollars and now it's like a million free, right? You know, I mean. That's pretty high, seven years. Big jump, that'll probably keep going up.
And the indication that my building ships will keep increasing as well as the influence events. Particularly when you have a first responders, that's where they're seeing that blow churns increase. Um, significantly, I feel, we, uh, with the health concerns, um, with the health concern with the first responders.
Alright, any final comments or questions for anybody on the panel? Melissa, you may come in.
There we go. Uh, I, no, nothing further, thanks everybody.
Great conversation, I think all of it really. Really good with all talking and trying to give you some kind of direction. I don't know if we gave you a whole lot, but, um. You know, um, I appreciate it and I, and I'm concerned as well about. You know, future, uh, something, you know, the state is raising all their taxes and taxing everybody out of their homes, but we get nothing. Counties and cities are, are the ones that are suffering. I mean, and obviously we're not, we're not staff heading here, we've got. You know, people doing two jobs, three jobs because. Five jobs, Mark put the tables up when I got here today, so.
Oh, and we're not, we're not unique, uh, we're seeing it, we're seeing it at the city of Olympia, we're seeing it in. Bellevue, right, we're seeing it at the news alleys at the same time. It's, it's. The fact that we're all being, it's just being proactive, being, being ahead of it. Not letting it surprise you, making, making your decisions, making your decisions and committing that.
There's nothing else?